...graduation because she got in an accident.
Porter, please rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ansorgi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Chairman Bonick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sudis Little.
Here.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
Okay, any communications, proclamations, or presentations? I see none, so then we'll move to approval of four minutes. We have four possible here, I think, or five. Commissioner Lautner.
I would make a motion that we approve the closed session minutes of Tuesday, November 13th, 2019.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Any others?
I would move to approve executive session of Tuesday, January 14th, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. January 21st.
I would move to approve Board of Commissioners' regular session Tuesday, January 21st, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion. I'm sorry.
Are we ready for?
I would prefer to wait on.
On the next one.
On the next one.
Okay, yes.
Haven't had a chance to go through it.
The regular one's passed, so seven zero. And so we'll wait on February 11th. Thank you. So then that brings us to approval of the agenda. We have three late additions. One, I put one A or one and two under number 12, park and rec. So it'd be. And then the third one would be a D under number 16. Commissioner Wessel.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We now have an agenda, and it's time for public comment. Please come forward.
Bruce Price from Lake Will. Like to pass out a little information.
Yeah, if you just hand them to them, we can pass them on down.
Is there one extra?
Yes.
I can't remember everything.
Time is running.
Yeah. This is as. This is to do with the tower issue with Verizon. Myself, I was dealing with Verizon for about three years, so it was no big secret. I guess it was and it wasn't. In the meantime, what happened, Eric had mentioned the other night on the Hannover property AT&amp;T the other day, but he didn't know the rest of the story. What's happened here is AT&amp;T was going to build a 300-foot tower on Suttons Bay Township on the Hannover line, which is adjacent to my land, so I got a letter on it. So we all went to the meeting, and they were real receptive of what they wanted to do. And at the same time, let's, I may get these mixed up. American Tower was going to build a tower on Hannover land. American Tower, okay? There's also a company called Tillman Tower. It's going to build a tower for AT&amp;T up from me, which is in Leland Township. Hannover is in Suttons Bay Township, this is in Suttons Bay Township. So they were, I was involved in the road on the AT&amp;T, went through my friend Jim Farisa, works for a big company out east, he owns the land back there. What was amazing, all of a sudden, the AT&amp;T went away. Now, what, the reason I bring this up is the fact that in 1115th Enterprise, public notice, that you'll see there, maybe you guys already knew more about this than we all did, but I'm not going to say it was under the table or anything, but maybe these things get talked about. The public noticed there that they put in, Verizon did basically, about building a tower on this land right here. Before, I don't think many people knew about it, I don't know if you knew about it, but they put that advertisement in the enterprise and then came to this meeting. So I got to wondering if there's some hanky panky that was going on that I didn't know about, and I don't want to involve anybody too much here, because then I realize that some county business has to be under the tables, but Ansorgi, Mr. Ansorgi and I were kind of talking, was Verizon been around? I hadn't heard anything for a couple of years, so they were back and forth talking, and they were at me quite a bit, at my place quite a bit, so I kind of blew them off after a while, because they're trying to, and my daughter used to work in this tower business, so I understand a little bit about it. The build of towers that they want to do with IG, with other stuff, so I guess what kind of struck me the other night is when one of Lautner, Miss Lautner, Mrs. Lautner, she asked the question, how come you don't want to go to Price Rises? And she said it wouldn't work there. That isn't what they told us all the time. I told her there was another tower there, and she said it worked beautiful. The reason it wouldn't work there, they didn't want to build a road up on my land and pay for it, so it was cheaper for them probably to come here, but it's not going to be cheaper for everybody that subscribes to that. And I just, the point I'm bringing it out is it doesn't bother me where the tower goes. But if you look at the old news, and I'm a believer, if you read through the, where they all went together there, I'm a believer of old water goes over the dam, it's new water. And I'm also a believer if you get stuck, go back and forward till you get out. But if you really read it and understand it, which I understand, I think all you guys do, it's basically like a quid pro quo there is what they were doing. They were, because Verizon or AT&amp;T is giving Verizon this rights and that rights with all the merger, you can see, I think, where it does say about the merger there, what's going on. So actually, you have one company.
Bruce, your five minute time.
That's no problem. You actually had one company.
Talk about the tower, maybe?
Oh, okay.
Doing the whole thing. I'll hang around if you want, if there's any questions you want.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Just remind me what my line of thought was.
Any other public comment?
Lois Bailey, Village of Suttons Bay. At your goal-setting meeting, you were talking about the possibility of nuclear power generation as the next clean power, and so I, my favorite book is called Drawdown, compiled by 200 scientists on the top 100 ways to draw down carbon. They ranked the different methods of power generation, and nuclear comes out 20th. So I copied out the section on nuclear power. Unfortunately, my spell choker up here was not working, and I left the in on a scientist, but wow. So you want to pass those around? So it's best to get the facts straight, and it's a good book to have around. Take a look at it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please, come forward.
Good evening. I'm here first of all, so make sure that all of you have the questionnaire. I left it to you at last month's meeting for me to pick up at the end of the meeting regarding zoning, so I'm looking forward to picking those up and getting your ideas about how that would be. And I want to speak about two things. One of them, the first one is that on a meeting of February 5th, at the Leland Township Planning Commission, we had an agenda item regarding recycling location. And we had a county commissioner make the presentation anticipating that the planning commission was going to make a recommendation to the township board. Unfortunately, that process is unlawful, because zoning laws are very clear about what the, what the process and legal requirements are for planning commissioners of the township to act upon facilities that are constructed within the township. Then I, I want to make a point that I think as much as we want to all do good, I would be careful that we don't interfere with other units of government in what they're doing. And I think we need to have a good discussion about it among commissioners. And another thing is also which goes with our zeal to do everything and be everything to everybody. We sometimes get a computer conception because we believe we're endowed with unique qualities and skills and maybe some omnipotence that we take onto ourselves. When I go to the 46.11 powers of the county commissioners, the law's only three pages long, and it doesn't specify in there that county commissioners will go out and develop goals for other activities beyond performing the administrative and ministerial duties of their job for the county. And I see that we want to establish a whole series of goals. Everybody has a grasp of them, they want to go and follow it. But when we do that, we create a tremendous amount of activity. We sap the resources of the county. Whenever meetings that are not essential or unmandated take place here, they sap the facilities, and they sap the power, they sap the resources, the people, to sit here and take minutes on these things. So from my perspective, there are only three things that belong as goals. They are the opioid addiction, which is a very severe issue. That needs to be continually addressed. The issue that was raised by the prosecutor and the sheriff at the last, is that committee meeting? That is the issue of mental health, and all mental health patients reside in the jails. That's a terribly serious problem, but we don't think that's important. And the final one is resolve and complete the airport's governance, governance issue. Beyond that, I don't believe the commissioners should be, in my mind, fooling around with a whole bunch of other series of goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on with our agenda. The first action item is the resolution for the first responders. We have a motion for that. And this will be a roll call vote. Commissioner Wessel.
Move to approve the Leland County Resolution First Responder Appreciation.
Second.
Okay, this will be a roll call.
May I, should we attach the number, since you do have a number?
Two, 2020-005.
I'm just going to put that in if that's okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel.
Yes.
Commissioner Ansorgi.
Yes.
Chairman Bonick.
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner.
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton.
Yes.
Commissioner Sudis Little.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. So that brings us to the medical examiner, the contract renewal request. Do you have that?
Yeah, it's the same as last week was approved by our legal counsel. No changes.
Commissioner Lautner.
I would move to approve the third amendment to the interlocal agreement for the creation of the regional medical examiner's office for the counties of Grand Terrors and Leland, pending our corporate council review, which has passed. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to the Benzie-Leland Early Childhood Contract. Commissioner Sudis Little.
I move to. Oh, what am I doing here? I move the Benzie-Leland District Health Department Early Childhood Contract be approved.
Second.
So we have waived bids, right, on this?
Yes.
And we're going with the health department no matter what? Okay. Any statements about this? Commissioner Lautner.
Well, that's a very good question. It begs the question of, questions we had of whether this should be going out for bids, since it is a big contract, so should it be included to waive bid requirements? Or do bid requirements not fall under this?
She did say she waives the bid requirements.
Is that in the motion?
I don't know.
Do we need to include it in the motion?
Do you want to include it in the motion?
I think you should.
Let's include it in the motion.
Is that okay with the second?
Yes.
Any other questions? Yeah.
A question on the length of the contract. I think we said it was a one-year contract, and we would continue to look at next year and the indirect cost, and if there's some ways we might reduce the indirect cost.
Actually, it expires December 31st, so it's a 10-month contract.
Thank you.
Mr. Rushton.
I would just like to pose the question, you know, we're advancing these dollars for the purpose of this program, and so that takes away our ability to use those resources while we wait for the tax dollars to come in. So those dollars are refunded back to the county. And the way I see it, this is an action that would be required every year, unless they plan on operating on the other half of the millage dollars for the remainder of 2021. So every year, this board is willing to fund those dollars, take away from our ability to use funds that are invested for other projects that we might need for the next five years. I find that unthinkable.
Commissioner Lautner.
Because I'm digging for the contract. The contract is just for services, but it doesn't state where those dollars are going to come from, per Commissioner Rushton's point. It just says we're going to come up with those dollars, $400,000.
Do we need to know where they're coming from, or do we know that they're coming from the general fund?
Personally, I think that the taxpayers deserve to know what this board is doing. We won't collect those dollars for this program until the end of the year, but we're saying, let's go ahead and advance the entire program. Let's go ahead and advance, as I said, I'm digging for, what, $300,000 for 10 months? Approximately, but we're not, don't care where it comes from, we're just going to find it.
I think it has been stated that it's coming from the general fund.
That was my understanding.
But, but there isn't a, I mean, I guess, does it need to have that, the number or whatever that account is stated on there? No.
No, we would bring that forward to you, because they're going to bill us quarterly, and it would be general fund, fund balance, a transfer into the health department, per that line item. I think it's about, it's under, I think it's around $280,000 to $300,000. I don't remember the exact dollar amount. And it's going to be billed quarterly, was my understanding.
And then the funds will be figured out at that time?
That's where that would be.
All right. Any other questions on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three. So then that, then we talked about the potential office space.
Yeah, I can give an update. I discussed this with Mrs. Peacock last week, and she's thankful for the opportunity. Currently, they have 6,400 square feet. She says they're actually short on space now. If we were to give the two remaining spots downstairs are vacant, that totals 2,591 square feet. So it's short on space. They actually, I think they may have to expand at some point. So obviously, the math does not work out, plus they have several years left on their contract. So at this point, they, not interested, however, they would be potentially interested if, now that this contract was approved, if those staff people could potentially have an office here, that would reduce some of those indirect costs. So that's a possibility, depending on who they hire and where those people will be assigned. If those people are working in the Suttons Bay, Leland Northboard area, an office here in this building would make sense. If they're working in the Empire Glen Arbor office, it would not make sense. So she is open to that possibility, which would reduce indirect cost as part of the contract.
Are any of them going to be working in the Bingham Elmwood District? No?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
All right. Anyway.
Yeah, they will.
So, so we won't.
Forget about them.
This will be, this will actually be later on then. If it's going to happen, it's not at this time.
He'll bring it back to us.
Right. All right. So I don't think there needs to be any motion or anything on that. So then this brings us to Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. Commissioner Wessel, did you?
I would say that after Carol Kovacs talked to us last week, I contacted him. I am the commission's representative on the community mental health board. We have spent quite a bit of time as a board looking at this issue. I asked him for some language that we might consider to communicate our concerns about essentially the siphoning off of mental health funds to other providers and other uses, and the reduction of services for those clients that we serve. He provided some language that was used in Manistee County. Did distribute that. I like this resolution, and I would offer it up as a, as a motion to approve this resolution to send on to the Association of Counties, Senator VanderWaal, Representative O'Malley, and the Michigan Association of Counties.
Second.
Did you want to say anything more about it? Commissioner Rushton.
Commissioner Wessel mentioned that it was a reduction in services. My understanding is that it's a restructuring of the organizational aspect of the health department. So I'm actually asking for clarification. So are we reducing services, or are we just reallocating services to other entities that may have the end result of a reduced, or maybe not a continuous oversight opportunity?
Oversight is one issue, and a lack of cost control is another. And if the costs go up, then the services would be reduced. So the, the, the community mental health board is concerned, and the system's concerned, that they will lose the ability to monitor how those funds are being spent.
Well, thank you for that clarification, because I wasn't quite clear the way the motion was stated.
The only thing, I think our board policy says we're supposed to do, introduce resolutions at the executive committee. You know, and so I'm, I'm willing, you know, are you willing to waive board policy? And, you know, could you make that part of it? Because I mean, usually it's supposed to be done at the executive committee, so we have a week to think about them and do them.
Mr. Chairman, would you ask the motion maker if there is, if we're under timeline here so that we can make that decision, make a better decision in regards to whether we approve it today or at executive?
I do not know that answer, and I apologize for that. I, I fear that this is on a fast track. But I don't know what that means, and a little bit depends on how quickly the Senate and the House acts on it. I would think that we might risk if we wait a month. So my, I would be happy to amend my motion to, to waive board policy. And I do understand it's short notice. I appreciate getting it out yesterday for us.
Right, and I did, was able to read it too, so was that okay with the second?
Yes.
Are there any other comments?
In addition to the stated people that the resolution would be going to, isn't it precedent that we would send it to other counties in the mental health district?
I believe it says it in here.
Well, it doesn't, but I mean, I would like to include it, I don't know if that's appropriate.
We can certainly do that if you like.
We can do that if that's the understanding the act to add. Be a free resolve, but a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Governor Whitmer, then after that. And before we put the Michigan Association of Counties, we put in the 83 counties of Michigan in addition to the Michigan Association. If that's what you're asking.
That is what I was asking.
I would further amend my motion.
And I'm okay with that.
I think that's a great suggestion, yes. Are there any other questions or statements? This is a resolution, so it would have to be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Wessel.
Yes.
Commissioner Ansorgi.
Yes.
Chairman Bonick.
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner.
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton.
Yes.
Commissioner Sudis Little.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So then that would bring us to the interagency agreement. Commissioner Lautner.
I would move to approve the Grand Terrors County and Leland County Interagency Agreement on Jail Diversion Program. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. That would bring us to airport governance. Commissioner Rushton.
I would move to allow Administrator Janik to work with Nate Elder of Grand Terrors County and Airport Director Kevin Klein to bring back to this board a sample of Articles of Incorporation and other optional, and other options to this board of what an airport governance structure and cost would look like.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. And now we've come to the road commission, potential, potential millage renewal request. I think we have, did you want to say anything, Justin, or? Commissioner Ansorgi.
I move to approve the Leland County Resolution 2020-XXX, the Leland County Road Commission Millage.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Does this, I'm sorry, it's a resolution. I'm sorry, this will be, this will be a roll call.
Roll call vote, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ansorgi.
Yes.
Chairman Bonick.
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner.
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton.
Yes.
Commissioner Sudis Little.
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We were again reminded today about the nice job that the road commission does on our roads, so.
Thank you.
I, I didn't think school needed to be canceled.
You and a lot of other parents. I will suggest they call you at 4:30 in the morning to check. We'll catch you at the list.
All right, so then that brings us to the Veterans Affairs Agency. Commissioner Rushton.
I would move to approve the Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency 2020 County Veteran Service Fund Grant Applications for Veteran Meals and the marketing campaign as had been presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So then, then that brings us to veterans' meals? Or does that all, that covers all of them then? Okay. So now we're at the sheriff's office, the 2020. So now we're at the sheriff's office, the 2020 Marine Safety Grant. Commissioner Ann Sorgi?
I move to allow the sheriff's office to apply for the Marine Safety Grant to cover a percentage of costs to run our marine safety program for the 2020 boating season.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And we have a renewal of the canteen service. Commissioner Lautner?
I would move that Leland County Board of Commissioners approve a five-year contract with Canteen Services Incorporated pending review by corporate counsel and to allow the board chair to sign the contract upon its approval.
Second.
Have we had any feedbacks?
It's been reviewed.
It was, nothing had changed in it, all right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So we have them with a solid waste council. Commissioner Wessel?
Yes, I move to approve Planning Director Gala's submit an application for the Michigan Recycling Quality Improvement Grant in the amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars by the due date of February twenty-third, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes seven zero. Then the potential approval of tire recycling contract?
I would move to waive bid requirements and approve an agreement with ERG Environmental Services for tire recycling services with funds to come from fund two-thirty DEQ grant, two percent allocation funds, and one dollar per tire from participants.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes seven zero. Then the renewal of recycling fee? Commissioner Lautner?
I would move that Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the Resolution 2020 dash authorizing election pursuant to the Public Act sixty-nine of two thousand and five as discussed.
Support. Let her go first. Go ahead, give me your answer.
I was going to let the motion maker make a comment first if she selects to do so.
Yep, thank you.
She did raise her hand, so, okay. Go ahead.
You know, we have the issue of the townships being able to do curbside recycling and the contract language that we got back did not have any procedure to allow that other than to say that if both parties agree, they can do it. Well, that's not giving any option there to say how we're going to do that, and that's a problem. So, you know, can, you know, is Trudy allowed to come forward?
Yes, absolutely. If she wants to.
Even if she doesn't care.
Sorry. She got subpoenaed.
Well, I was hoping if there was any more responses, I could have gone so that we could ask the attorney to revise it some more. So if it's still an issue and we need to go back to the attorney, we certainly can do that. What he did was put some language in there allowing that, not the actual steps of how we would do that because we would have to figure that out. I don't know if that answers the question or not.
Yeah, see, my problem is, it says, well, if both parties agree, we can change the contract. Well, that's true at any point in time, but what if, just like what happened last year, that, you know, the solid waste plan doesn't get changed or, you know, we change the plan and then, oh, no, you know, we don't want Elmwood Township doing curbside recycling because we want them, we want to keep that money coming in for the recycling sites. That's the problem that I have. We should have the procedure in there to say if, you know, if you truly want to increase recycling, curbside recycling will do that. So we should have the procedure in there to say if a township establishes curbside recycling, they can get out of the agreement. That's what it should say, if you really want to have the opportunity to increase recycling. But just to say, well, if both parties agree, all that tells me is they don't want to ever in the next ten years to do anything about curbside recycling because there's no procedure in there to allow the township to do that.
Trudy, isn't it true is if a township doesn't vote for it, then it's not, it's not, or is that, doesn't matter?
That is correct. You can only apply the fee in the communities where it passes. And so when we did it ten years ago, it passed in all the communities and that's what it was.
That's what I thought, because I think the first one, I think.
The first one didn't work that way, right.
Well, Bingham didn't pass it and I think there was one other township.
That was fifteen years ago when you did the first vote on it.
Right. So, I mean, if Elmwood wants to do it, they just have to not vote for it? Yes.
You know, Elmwood would like to continue with the recycling sites until the solid waste plan is changed, so they are allowed to do the curbside recycling. You know, do you really want to push Elmwood Township into the position to say, okay, we're not going to do anything until that's done? I, you know, I would think that you would want to continue the recycling sites until you have curbside, the ability to do curbside recycling and that gets approved. I would assume that you would want to do that, but, you know, just saying, you know, just taking the option to say, okay, just don't let them vote for it, well, that's not a good option, in my opinion. You really want them to participate until the curbside recycling is established and that is not, is not going to get done until the plan gets changed. So I think, you know, from my perspective, you know, you want everybody to continue to use the recycling sites until that point in time that they can do recurr- by recycling and they get that approved at the township of, whatever township it is. And, you know, does that make sense?
Yes, but I did not have any other language that was presented to me after I sent this out to the board last Thursday, so I was assuming that it was okay the way it was submitted. That's what our attorney drafted up to put in there is to give the option that if we're going to amend the plan, which we can do that, we have to come back to the board with the process. There's some forms that have to be approved by the board and then we start the process to amend the plan. And then this would allow for us to also amend this interlocal agreement if a community goes in that direction to do curbside recycling.
Basically, the attorney said, you don't even need to do this because if both parties agree, they can modify the agreement at any point in time anyway. So, you know, that language, in my opinion, is superfluous because it doesn't really mean anything. So, you know, my question right now is, do we have to do something with this this month or can we take another month to have the opportunity to have that language prepared?
Well, I actually planned ahead and left myself some extra time, so if you need me to go back to the attorney and bring it back next month, we still have enough time because after this, we have to go out to all the townships and villages to get the interlocal agreement approved. And the ballot language, we already have that pretty much firmed up. So if you want something further revised and you have something specific in mind or you want Solid Waste Council to kick something around so we can give it to the attorney, I'd be glad to do that.
From your perspective, would the solid waste council want to have Elmwood participate in the recycling sites until such time they get curbside recycling? Does that make sense?
Sure. And when we talk about a process, there's a whole process in there, as I brought up at the executive committee meeting, the fee doesn't go just for recycling. We have household hazardous waste, electronics, tire recycling, administrative fees, there's a lot of other fees. So we need to talk about that as if a community says, we're doing curbside recycling, we want to stay away from this, what do we do with those other programs when their citizens want to participate?
And that, you know, that's the kind of thing that, you know, maybe you break that up and say, okay, if Elmwood goes, or any township goes to curbside recycling, instead of the thirty-five dollars, it's X number of dollars, so those people can still participate in those other county programs and not the recycling site thing. You know, all I'm trying to do here is to come up with a process to get where I think everybody wants to go. But just saying, well, you know, if both parties agree in the future, we can change the contract. Well, yeah, that goes for any contract, you know, but if you don't, if we don't have a process in place to say to Elmwood Township, we understand that you want to do curbside recycling and this is how we can make that happen, once we get the plan changed and all that, then they are going to be a lot more comfortable in township, wouldn't they?
I guess my one question with related to that would be, do we want to put all of that in this interlocal agreement? Because this interlocal agreement is the step that we take to get this approved in the community so that we can get the ballot language on their ballot. Do we want to get into the particulars of how we would do that process in this interlocal agreement or set it up as a separate document?
See. Well, Commissioner Lautner?
A couple of questions. As I understand it, Elmwood is the only township we're really talking about, that's the only township I've heard from that's interested in curbside recycling, and it's probably the only township that it's even feasible density-wise.
Density-wise.
Density-wise, yeah. So that being said, we're looking at Elmwood. Elmwood can do curbside recycling on top of this program in Elmwood if they're willing to risk that, the lawsuit threat from before, is that correct? So you're just looking for a little bit of language that says, well, you won't be sued if you put curbside recycling on top of this program. You're not looking to pull out of our program. Because as Trudy said, I think you still want drop-off sites because not everybody's going to do the curbside, or they're going to forget, or they're going to have party and have too much, et cetera, plus the additional add-on recycling sites.
Is that it?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton, you had your hand.
I was going to ask Trudy what the obstacles are for recycling across the county. I do know one is density. Is that the only obstacle, is the density for curbside?
For, yeah.
I'm sorry, for curbside?
Yeah, and the cost.
And the cost.
Yeah, because you're running, you're running trucks. What American Waste has relayed to us as well, some older haulers we've checked with is that you don't get everyone participating and you're running those trucks, especially in rural areas, a long distance before you're stopping and picking up again and so forth. And they've explored the idea, we've talked about it over the years, and they still look at it as the most efficient and cost-effective is still the drop-off locations for our type of rural area.
So if the people in Elmwood Township would like to have curbside, that would eliminate the, the site that we currently have there now, is that?
I wouldn't want to say that.
Okay. And do you know what a ballpark cost would be per household if they were to utilize curbside?
The only example I have right now is when American Waste ran for us in Sutton's Bay Township. And that was the example I gave last Tuesday is they projected it out at a hundred percent participation of residential homes, which I am doubtful you will get a hundred percent participation. Pickup is every other week, not every week, and it would be sixty-five dollars roughly a year just for that curbside.
And if they pared that down to once a month, would it be half that cost?
I didn't run that scenario with them. I asked them just give me an example with one township.
Are you through?
I am, thank you.
Commissioner Wessel?
I would, I understand Tony's concerns, but I would prefer to act on this tonight and then ask the solid waste council to develop a process to move forward with an exception if Elmwood Township or another township wanted an exception. But I think today we ought to act on this and we ought to approve the ballot language and move forward.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
I feel comfortable with that as well. I think that it's going to be a process both for us, solid waste council to change the plan and also for Elmwood to get a plan in place. And I think that the way the language is now allows for that negotiation, you know, it's open-ended enough that it does allow that negotiation to take place.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
The problem with doing that is what you're saying to Elmwood Township, we want you to pay for the recycling fee and if you go to curbside recycling, you're going to pay on top of that. So you are penalizing those people in Elmwood Township that want to increase their recycling by charging them twice. Now, if we were to go to a curbside recycling plan, which is what Elmwood tried to do and did have a very competitive quote for Elmwood Township before it got derailed because of the threat of a lawsuit by American Waste, if we were to go to the Grand Travers County curbside recycling plan, those people that get garbage pickup, they also get to recycle, you know, they have curbside recycling available to them as well, every one of them. Those people that do not have garbage pickup can still take their recyclables to the American Waste site and drop them off in, you know, in Grand Travers County, you know, just like Grand Travers County does today. So if we don't have a process to allow a township like Elmwood to go to curbside recycling, what you're saying to them is, we're going to lock you in for ten years and if you want to go to curbside recycling, you're going to pay twice. That is not right. We should be encouraging people to recycle, not penalizing them to recycle. That's where I'm coming from.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
Well, just Leland, residents in Leland Township, it's got to be the number one question I get, A, where's our recycling site, and B, how about curbside recycling? So I know Leland would be interested in exploring options, but I understand that many people, and I know a lot of Leland residents, do participate in the hazardous waste and in the tire and the other programs too. So it's, I can see it's going to be a sticky wicket to work out exactly how that would accommodate townships that wanted to move in that direction but also wish to participate in the existing programs that the recycling program has. So it's, I'm not sure how to come up with a process. I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Ann Sorgi, because my township is talking the same, they would like to have curbside, but I don't think we can eliminate for them a recycling site because not everybody would be able to, would want to have a curbside and cost less.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
If we don't come up with the process, you understand what you're saying to Elmwood Township, because they had gone out and got a quote to have curbside recycling and were ready to do it until the threat of the lawsuit because the solid waste plan was changed to allow it. And of course, it never did get changed, you know, lots of different reasons. So, you know, there is no need to do that this month. I would suggest if you want, you know, that we could wait a month, give the opportunity for the solid waste council to come up with a plan that they say they want everybody to recycle more, to come up with a plan to say, this is how we can do this, and come up with the options to say, okay, you know, maybe you don't pay the thirty-five dollars a month, but you continue to pay X dollars so that you can participate in the hazardous waste pickup and the tire pickup and all that kind of stuff, because people still will want to do that. But if we don't come up with a process, understand what you're saying to Elmwood Township.
Well, I mean, if, if it says, if you put in there up to thirty-five dollars, all they would have to say is if, if recycling goes in on curbside, then it gets reduced to something.
Exactly.
You know, like twenty dollars or whatever, you know, so they can still participate in the other things, so that.
Exactly. Have that process defined.
That would be, I would, where I don't know if that can go in there or not, because if Leland then wants to do curbside and theirs gets reduced to twenty and Sutton's Bay wants to, you know, then, I mean, pretty soon if they put this in there, they're going to be destroying their own system. It's just hard to do, so. I see your dilemma, but I also see where if you put something like that in there, you're also defeating your own project.
You know, what is, what is the real purpose here? Are you trying to encourage recycling or are you just trying to protect this plan that we're doing today? we're doing today? Comes down to that.
Mr. Lotner.
I don't think, personally, I don't see that it would work for us to say, well, you're going to pay less because you're going to, the recycling is going to be done, curbside, et cetera. Well, if we don't see the reductions in the tonnage at the sites, we will still have all of our costs, correct?
Correct.
But we would have less income to cover our costs. So we could have a deterioration of the whole county-wide recycling program. And I, you know, picturing Elmwood Township, I understand, I remember when they presented the quote, maybe it would work for Elmwood. It is dense enough down towards Graylockville, then I know it does get rural and if you're combining that, perhaps that would work. But honestly, I don't, honestly, I just see Leland County, a rural enough county, that the recycling program we have works. It works very well. Our sites, our sites are convenient enough that the flow of traffic, you're going past recycling site, in very few instances do you have to backtrack to get to a site. It just seems to work very well. And I don't want to see us jeopardizing any of the additional household hazardous waste or the tire recycling or any of those. I don't want to see us jeopardizing those programs and I could see that becoming a potential, a potential problem of us not having the dollars to do those.
Mr. Rushton.
It was stated here today that any community can decline to participate with recycling. So if we were to, if a campaign was started down in Elmwood Township to vote no on this issue, we would lose Elmwood Township altogether or could. And that may in fact jeopardize recycling. I think personally, today, we have enough time to explore this option and at least come up with something that would work because we are actually looking at a 10-year program here. And, you know, if this was a year program or a two-year program, I might be willing to support it today. But because it's a 10-year program, we don't really have, we don't have everything that we need to move this forward, in my opinion. And I do really think that after some study or some conversation with Elmwood Township and looking at all of the options that may be available, that they should be considered at this time before we engage in a 10-year lease. As far as participating in the other events with recycling, maybe we're going to say something like, you know, if you've decided to go to curbside recycling, then there will be a fee of X amount of dollars to utilize these services. I'm sure with a little bit more discussion, we can come to some sort of, an agreement on this issue, but for today, I will not be supporting this.
Mr. Sutis.
Question just for Trudy. You had indicated you were kind of anticipating and saving a little extra time. Will a month give you enough time to kind of work through this and come up with some options?
Sure. In response to the comments here today, I would like to keep this generic enough that we don't get tied up in too many details because what works for one community might not work for another community or we might never see it happen. So I'd hate to put it so specific that a community balks at that. So I will work on what Mr. Ansorkey said and will come up with some suggestions on how we could outline something but not get it too detailed.
When you had actually talked about perhaps a second document that might help.
Yes, I'll go back and talk to the attorney and tell him, here's our, here are the thoughts. What can we do to get something a little more, you know, spelled out on how it would work, that would work for you and would also work for the communities so that when we take it to them, they understand, you know, what this language is and lights in there.
Commissioner Redd.
With a language in there that says it can be changed by either party, doesn't that allow, I mean, doesn't that allow that as it stands?
If you can both agree.
Well, I mean, I'm assuming that we would both agree, that is an assumption that I'm making, yes. But as you say, the Solid Waste Council and I believe everyone on board here believes that, you know, recycling should be increased and we'd all love to have curbside recycling if we could afford it. But, you know, as Spence pointed out, that you don't want to get into too much detail because then you're jeopardizing the entire program. So, I mean, we're opening it up so that people could, you know, make changes.
Commissioner West.
Well, I did say I wanted to take action on this tonight, but I understand Commissioner Rushton's concern. We do need support for our village. And if Trudy says we can put it off for a month, that's what I would favor doing as well.
I don't think, do we have a motion on the table here?
I believe it's my motion.
Yeah, I thought so. So that would be up to you really if you wanted to withdraw it or not. Do we want to move forward?
And I'm of a mind not to withdraw my motion because I don't think the entire county is ready yet for curbside recycling. So I understand what you're saying by pulling it, well, then Elmwood could do this if they That being said, well, then if another township decides they are going to do it and then another township decides they're going to do it, I'm concerned about our entire county-wide recycling program. I'm also concerned about the cost of, you know, potentially tripling or more the cost to our residents for recycling. Because if your example was for Sutton's Bay, that has a village that's quite dense compared to some of our other townships. So I don't think $65 would work there. So it would just be an enormous cost and I think it would be an enormous burden on the people who maybe are in their homes a couple of months of the year up here. They would really be subsidizing the entire program and that, there's just some unfairness to that. They're paying for the recycling program. I don't know if they're using it when they're here, they have that ability, but they certainly wouldn't be here for curbside service.
Commissioner Anderson.
Based on what has happened in other locations, when you go to curbside recycling, you increase recycling on, on average, 60%. That's substantial. That's substantial. So, you know, it's, you know, how do you increase recycling? Yeah, we have recycling sites and, yes, for a rural area, those rural area, that's, it is probably the most cost-effective way to do that in very rural areas. But where you have a location, a township like Elmwood, where the density is actually greater than the average in Grand Traverse County, and they have a county-wide recycling thing, and they already went out and went through the process and did have a very competitive bid that they would like to have started curbside recycling, you're saying, no, don't do that. Don't increase recycling. Why would we want to send that message? I think, I think we should be sending the message that, yes, Elmwood, continue to participate until you do go to curbside recycling, rather than push Elmwood Township and say, don't vote for it at all. That's a, you know, I don't think that's a good choice.
Mr. Rushton.
I think one of the things that concerned me is under the existing interlocal agreement, and this hasn't really changed much from, the one you're proposing today hasn't really changed much from the historical one. Am I correct there?
Correct.
Okay. And what gives concern to me is the threat that was made of suing Elmwood Township for going outside the agreement. That's why I'm saying we need to look at appropriate language. And I do agree with you, if you get too detailed, that creates a problem. But I think we have the time to explore that and that's, again, why I will be voting no on this today.
Commissioner Sutis.
Call the question.
Second.
All right. So this will be a vote on whether we're going to vote on the resolution. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
If the motion passes six to one, so now we will have a vote on the resolution. Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Commissioner Redd.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
No.
Commissioner Sutis?
No.
Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ansorkey?
No.
Chairman Bonick?
Yes.
Four yes, three no passes.
So we have that. Then that brings us then to the ballot language.
Commissioner West. I move to approve ballot language for the funding of waste reduction programs and recycling by up to $35 per household.
Second.
Was Ann for the collection of materials for recycling? You kind of stopped speaking.
I had them both in there.
Oh, you do? You wrote it down? I'm just comparing it to what you saw last week. Okay? Does this want me to go away?
Is that okay with the second?
Yes.
Okay. So, in this, I'm not going to support this because I'm not for us raising the rate. I believe that we're doing a fine job with what it is and I don't think that it's all speculative in their budget. So I would say charging them $29 is fine. It's more than enough. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes four to three.
Did you, um, can, can tell me who voted no?
One, two.
Okay. I was.
What?
Oh, you looking for your no votes? It went five to, no votes were?
Was five to, four to three.
Four to three. Four to three.
Ann, Sorey, Rushton, and I voted no, and you voted yes.
Okay. And then I was, I was going to back up to the, to a point of order. On my previous motion, did we have, was that supposed to be roll call? We did roll call.
You did roll call.
We did.
Okay, thank you. We did.
It was four to three? Yes.
I was roll four to three.
So then it's the interlocal agreement?
I would move to approve the interlocal agreement and for it to be presented to all townships and villages in the county for approval.
Commissioner West.
Is this where we can build in some language to address the concerns that Deb Rushton and Tony shared about making exceptions to agreements?
Is that a question for Trudy?
It's a question for somebody.
Well, the attorney did put in language, which is on the second page of the agreement in red that I sent to you.
Right.
However, if you want something different, that's up to you. My other suggestion is what I mentioned earlier is if we do a separate document.
Right.
That we could present to the townships and work with them on a separate document.
The reason I raised the question is it's a whole lot easier to get support for a household fee on an election issue if there's support from the commissioners. And I think if we can resolve our differences on this particular issue, that helps sell the household fee on the ballot.
Commissioner Sutis.
And I think it makes sense to give that month to come up with language and perhaps an additional document that would address the whole issues that are kind of causing us to be not unified in terms of our thinking right now. So I would, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Yes. Then I won't be supporting it.
Commissioner Redd, did you want to say something, I thought?
No, I just, you know, I, I think that there could be a second document and I don't think that it has to be, you know, interjected into the conversation at this point. I mean, it can be taken to the various township boards, but as a separate document. So I'm.
Okay, so this is on the interlocal agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails, four to three.
Can you tell me who voted yes for that?
I'm sorry? You want to?
So we had two that voted yes for that?
Three.
Oh, you two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're good.
Yes.
Lotner, Redd, Bonick?
Yes. All right, so that, that fails. All right, so now we'll move on to the, yeah.
Can I just ask Trudy, will we discuss this at the next Solid Waste Council then and bring it back next month? Because, I mean, I know we are under some sort of time.
Yes, I will get back with the attorney.
Okay.
Pass along the information and then get something ready for you at the March 3rd Solid Waste Council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any question about the concerns?
I don't think so. I understand where you're coming from and I'll talk with the attorney and then if we have any other questions or need clarification, I'll get back with you.
Is there, can I ask?
Go ahead, yes.
Is there a plan out there to look at the solid waste plan and change that so that curbside recycling is allowed?
Yes, yes. Well, I'll be bringing that up March 3rd as well with Solid Waste Council.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sutis.
Thank you, Trudy. Moving to the next item?
I'd like to.
Okay. I move to Leland County Board of Commissioners to operate, maintain, and repair as necessary the Leland Dam utilizing the present budget and methods without a special assessment district at this time.
Support. Any comments, Commissioner Lotner?
Yes, aye. I, going back over some emails before this meeting, I came across back a little ways, a lot of emails from people living on Lake Leland that were thanking us for being so generous as to pay 50% of the dam repairs. And it seemed like they were all so happy that we were willing to pay 50% and they would only have to pay 50%. And then the dam committee decides, well, shoot, county's pockets are deep enough, let's just have the county pay the whole shot. Now, I know at least one of them is a riparian that now won't have to pay anything. I think I have a real problem with that. I told him so. I think it's a conflict of interest. I don't know if there are any others that have, that also live on the lake now that will not have to pay for the dam repairs if this passes. So after they came out with that recommendation, then of course reflected in emails that everybody on the lake agrees with the dam authority now that county should just pay everything. So I find it very peculiar and I won't be supporting this motion. I think that the best thing we could have done for the county as a whole, which is what we're sitting here to do, is to have put in the special assessment district for 10 years, done every, all the work that needs to be done on that dam and split the cost 50/50. I think that was fair. I think that this is very unfair, especially to those people, and I did hear from a few that live on shores of other lakes and Lake Michigan in this county, and they are already paying more than their fair share of property taxes. And now they'll, they'll pay this burden too. So I won't be supporting this motion.
Commissioner West.
Well, I originally thought a special assessment district was a good idea and we were talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then when we get an estimate that for the next five years, it's only a little bit more than we have in our existing budget. And it sounds like routine maintenance to me. And I would, I would favor a special assessment district in the future when we find we have to do major repairs. But as Steve, our drain commissioner, said, this is like cracking a nut with a sledgehammer. It's such a small amount of money for the next five years. It's such a small amount of money for the next five years. And that's why I support the motion to take it out of our general funding.
Commissioner Ansor.
Based on the submissions that were made to us, the total operation and maintenance costs through 2030 is $355,000. That does not include the cost for Jerry's time to operate the dam. It doesn't include any of that. So you're in the neighborhood of $400,000. And I don't understand how that is not a substantial amount of money, based on the numbers that came from the dam authority. I also have a problem. The dam authority should have provided the different options for financing, but it is not their prerogative to choose a financing option. That is our job. It was inappropriate, in my opinion, for them to make a recommendation on a financing option. They should have provided the options. But it was inappropriate, in my opinion, for them to make that recommendation. That's this board's duty. I do not understand... We're the only ones doing this. But I can find what is different in Leland County that we think we need to subsidize an improvement, the cost of an improvement that primarily benefits the riparian owners? What is different in Leland County? Nothing, other than people that live on the lake would like to have somebody else subsidize their cost of owning their property. Well, I would like to have somebody subsidize the cost of my property too. But that's not the way it's supposed to work. I, you know, it just boggles my mind. That little pea is just rattling around.
Commissioner Sussel.
Well, I made the motion because basically for five reasons. And Commissioner Ansor, you make good points, but I don't agree with all of them. If we renew the assessment, the cost is going to be about $100,000 more. And we would be passing those costs on to the riparians. So it would go from 300 and something to 400 and something, which is a huge bite. Because we can do an assessment, according to Act 451, doesn't mean we should. As I mentioned last time, when you... When I researched when and where it is appropriate to do assessment, it is... An assessment district is created to finance improvement when no other source of money is available. So in this case, we do have another source, and it's spread over 10 years. So the cost isn't really gargantuan year by year. People who live next to a national park, next to a conservancy land, next to a county or township park, they all have higher value in their property. But we maintain our county parks, and we don't charge an assessment to those people. And we also do a lot of improvements to our parks. But we don't assess the people who live around the park. The people who are living on the lake, yes, they have the benefit, but they also have a lot of other things that aren't so beneficial. One, when they bought their property, many of them, it was not as much traffic as there is right now. People love to enjoy that lake, all people. And there's a lot of property... Boats going up and down. And now there are a lot of big boats. And the big boats are creating huge wakes. And the huge wakes are eroding the properties. So they have to bear the cost, not only the high water situation we're in now, even though we're doing the best we can to maintain it, but also the erosion from the high... The very high wakes from boats that are over 24 feet going along the lake. And there's a lot of them. So it's loss of privacy. It's a lot of money to put towards keeping and maintaining. They do pay association fees. And those fees go into doing a lot of other things for the lake that we all benefit from. Swimmer's itch, all of the other things that you heard talked about that I won't go into again. Because the Michigan, by law, Michigan residents own the lake waters, all residents benefit in essence, and all residents have the right to recreate. So the dams are all recreational dams, if you want to technically look at it that way. So I went and talked with Steve Christensen for a while and wanted to know what were our lakes and what were our dams that were in existence? And I won't bore you with all the details. You can talk to Steve, who has a font of information, it's very interesting. But we went through just a few. Like the Mule... I'm going to bl- 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 the name. Mulemburg Dam, which is in Elmwood Township. It's eight acres. It's an earthen dam. The Cherry Bend Lake Owners, who knows who that was at that time? And the Drain Commissioner have responsibility for that dam repair. Which there's all kinds of precedence here for having government at some level pay for some of this. The Glen Lake Dam, the Glen Lake Association, not everybody who lives on the lake, but the Glen Lake Association paid initially for the dam. The county paid $2,000 for a river study to determine the proper water flow on the dam. And I should mention that the Glen Lake Dam is one quarter or less than the cost of the Leland Dam. And our residents around the lake did share 50/50 on that cost. The Cedar Lake in Elmwood has public access. It's about 250 acres. The dam actually goes under residents' property in 1986. The township took over with responsibility for maintenance and repair. Lime Lake is a rock-structured dam with just a series of stones that way back when in the 80s, the residents, those that were around the water at the time, put it in. It's... There are no ongoing costs associated with it. Little Traverse Lake, the county road commission maintains that through the culverts. So there's a lot of precedence out there to have government involved in assisting with dam costs or maintaining the costs for maintenance and repair in something they own. And our Leland Dam, of course, as everybody knows, was privately owned until 1981 or '82, when the county bought it and the footprint that it's on. So for all these reasons, I think it is fair, you know, for the county to pick up the full costs. And that's why I made the motion.
Commissioner Rushton.
What happens if we take the dam out?
The water goes away?
The water goes away.
It goes down.
It goes down.
That's what I mean.
It goes down. It doesn't mean it totally goes away. So if we take the dam out and the water goes away, what happens to the properties around the lake? Are they then converted to marshland?
And now they're wetlands.
And wetlands? Exactly. So my point is that dam, being in the position that it's in, actually provides a direct benefit to the people around the lake. Okay? I think Commissioner Lautner hit the nail on the head. We have set a precedence where we have shared in the cost of the dam. However, going forward for the next 10 years, as has been stated, these are only the known costs to the dam at this time. Just like a couple months ago, when the water level came up so high, we had an emergency repair, I think was what, $75,000? Correct me if I'm wrong on the amount. So I also support the idea of this being a 50/50 because there is a direct benefit to those property owners. And nine times out of 10, it's the local property owners that are using that lake more so than the rest of the citizens in the county. So for me, a 50/50 is something that I think both sides could work with. And I will not support this motion today. But I would also like to add, as the information was said to all of us today, it wasn't the court that forced the county to become owners of that dam. It was the county who petitioned to be the fiduciary for that dam. And there's the difference.
Commissioner Russell.
We've tossed around the figure $350,000, and that's over 10 years. So that's $35,000 a year. If it's a 50/50 proposition, that's $17,500 a year. We're really going to set up an assessment district and pay for all that for $17,000 a year? It just sounds like a really bad investment.
Commissioner Ansor.
No.
The other piece of the pie here is if you don't use the special assessment process, then you can't build the state. And the state, as, you know, an example, was, you know, down in Oakland County, Pontiac Lake Dam. They ended up paying 35% of the cost of that dam, maintaining that dam. The state had to pay for it because there was public access on the lake. And guess what? That's the DNR access, and the DNR was assessed their fair share. If you don't use the special assessment process, what you're saying is, we're not going to build the state. We're going to have all the people and all the taxpayers in Leland County pay for that. Guess what? If you just use 35%, now you're going to, you know, obviously, in the special assessment process, you've got to come up with some good, hard numbers. But let's just use that 35% that they had down in Pontiac. That in and of itself would cover the cost of the special assessment district. Why would you not want the state to chip in their fair share instead of having the taxpayers in Leland County pick up that cost? Boggles my mind.
Commissioner Lautner.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Ansor, because that was a point I did want to bring up. And thank you for the research done on it. Very, a very good job on that. The estimates what we've got are actually more like $370,000. And those are only estimates based on prices of what we know today. So we have a precedence of paying 50%, of having the riparians pay 50%. We break that precedence, it's probably a precedence we would never get back again. As a very wise mentor of mine said, if you watch the nickels and dimes, the dollars take care of themselves. So to sit here and say, well, you know, only 17,000 on top of... 17,000 on top of 17,000 on top of 17,000 is peanuts disturbs me. We're talking... We're talking, this is a lot of money here. I'm just asking that we just do a fair financial deal on this dam. And I am really, as I said Tuesday, I'm very upset with the analogy of hitting a peanut with a sledgehammer. And I hope that perhaps sometime in my life, $370,000 will seem like peanuts to me because it doesn't today. So another good point brought up, and as was in the research, is that if the county petitioned then to own this dam, do we want to consider petitioning to unown this dam? Or sell it to the riparians? And we don't have to worry about it anymore. So maybe that's something we ought to look into.
Commissioner Sussel.
Call the question.
More. Okay. So this vote will be on whether we're going to vote on the motion. So the first vote is just to see if we're going to vote at this time with no more discussion. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. So now this vote will be on the motion. Anybody, everybody knows what the motion is? Do we need it read at all?
No. We have a roll call, please?
Okay.
Just a second, I had to look back to see who made it. I made it. Commissioner Sussel?
Yes.
Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ansorgi?
No.
Chairman Bonick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner?
No.
Commissioner Rettenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
No.
Four, three, yes.
Thank you. So then we'll move on then to the maintenance for the campus demowing proposal.
I would move to waive bid requirements and approve renewing a contract between Leland County and Spinniken Lawn Care at an approximate cost of $465 per visit. Funds to come from, fund ending in 801.003. Pending council review and approval of the contract.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. So then that brings us to the Park and Rec Commission. Set a public hearing date? Commissioner Russell.
As I move to hold a public input session 8:30 a.m. on Tuesday, March 10, 2020, on the proposed MDNR Recreation Passport Grant application.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes five to two. So now, then that brings us to the number one late edition. And in this, this is a consulting engineering service?
Do you want to do this one right now?
What's that?
Is this one you want to do right now?
Yes. That's where we had, we had put it into the agenda. It's one... Late Edition one.
So just sit tight.
I think we're missing another Parks and Recreation issue.
Oh, really?
Late Edition number two.
Late Edition number two.
Is that... What would that be? Would that be the...
I was bringing to you two recommendations from the Parks and Rec Commission. You simply voted on, you just voted on one of them. But the other recommendation was that you give, you allow us, you give us the authority, that is, the Parks and Rec Commission, to apply for a recreational passport grant.
Okay. That was, that's to be...
We slipped something in between you.
Got it.
I have...
Do you want to go to that one?
No. I have a question on that last motion, if I may.
Bring it.
And maybe I just need a clarification because the motion was for an MNRTF grant.
Right.
Does that recreation passport grant, is that a different grant?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Which is why...
So this motion...
Is out the window.
Is inappropriate.
You're not submitting that grant, right?
Well, we took the cart before the horse, honestly.
I did put the cart before the horse. But I did, the motion did include the passport grant, not the original grant. That's not what I understood.
That's not what I understood either.
I read it from here, Mr. Chair. I read it from here and I... The language is here, MDNR Recreation Passport Grant.
Okay. And you said you read number two, Late Edition number two?
I did.
Gotcha.
Okay. And so we're not doing the other one, setting a public hearing date?
Yeah, it was a public hearing date.
But that's not, I mean, the original one? Okay.
Right.
I want to verify that that's actually what happened. Can we?
I'd have to go back and listen to the tape, but I did hear the words passport recreation grant, because I was trying to follow what happened. Which would make sense. Sorry.
It would make sense because your recommendation from last week was just to move setting of the Parks and Recreation public hearing date on the 2020 MNRTF grant.
on the 2020 M N R T F grant application. But I did hear the passport grant application, so I have adjusted it to be what he read, which is different than what the topic on the agenda said.
Right.
But the error I made, Mr. Chair, was.
Is correct.
Was we should have first dealt with the change from the first grant to the passport grant.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that. All right, so then that does take care of two B, or the second, late edition number two. So now we go to late edition number one?
No, there's the second part of that. He applies for a different type of grant.
Can I just get clarification? Are we going like away from our approved agenda now?
I don't, we have, yes, I think we have. So I'm trying to get it straightened out.
We're still back at the G I, G E I consultants. You haven't done that yet.
Correct. We have not done number one.
Right.
So I just wish to know.
Maybe we should do that one first and then, hey.
That's the one I thought.
They had explained what's going on here.
Okay.
So Steve is here for that one.
All right. So we'll do late edition number one. Does Steve want to come forward?
Excuse me, Steve Christensen, Drain Commissioner. And previously, you had approved a general services contract with E N G because Brian Sensi worked for E N G. Brian Sensi has since left that company and now is working with G E I. So the contract needs to be changed to the entity G E I to keep my engineer, Brian Sensi, working on my projects. So that's the, that's the new twist.
Commissioner Anser.
Is this company no longer have anybody that can do this work? You know, we're chasing a person, one particular person, rather than a company. And that's kind of unusual. You understand where I'm coming from here? Is this company no longer have engineers capable of doing this work? The original company?
The, that's a good question. I'm going to answer it in two parts. First part is when I first came on the job as a Drain Commissioner, the very first task that I saw on the top of the pile on that desk was from the D N R D E Q to fix my dam. So what I did is I researched, you know, what I needed, and the very first thing I needed was an engineer to design the fix. So I went to a conference, and I went around, it was an association conference, and there was a room full of companies. So I'm going from one to the next, and I came to one that didn't have any dam on the marquee there. And the guy was standing there, and I said, well, gee whiz, I'm just looking for companies that do dam work. As it turned out, he was filling in for somebody, and that's all he did was dam work. And he worked for consumers, and he had an extraordinarily good resume. And I was, I was impressed with the man. And I felt this is a person that I would really be interested in to contract with to fix the Leona Dam. So it was Thomas Perhoda. And we hired him. He worked for BAR Engineering. It took six years, passed my whole term and into my second term, to finish the project. The engineer at the end of the project was Thomas Perhoda. He was the right engineer. He did a phenomenal job. He had the right person in place, Rusty Friedel, who now works with Fisher, who did the dam wall not to exceed $38,000, and it came in at just over $15,000. So what I'm saying is, when you find the person that is the right person to do the job, if that person moves companies, you follow the person. There are many engineers in Traverse City that I've worked with over 20 years. None of them, with very few exceptions, are working at the same company that they worked in when I started 20 years ago. This man is the man we need. He has the expertise I need. He's done 150 these in the rural of Michigan. Yes, I would assume that company has somebody that does this kind of work. They do not have Brian Sensi, who went to a better company for better money with more juice. I want Brian Sensi. That's the person I hired.
Well, does the old contract, what does that say? I mean, has that been thrown out?
We're going through council. It's all through council. Corporate council.
But has that been eliminated?
Led us through this legally, and it's what we can do.
Well, this is for the new firm. You would have borne to cancel the old contract.
That contract didn't get signed. The one you approved for general services was not signed. So we don't have a contract for general services. And this is the one that we're bringing to you through G E I.
I don't know. Did the chairman sign it?
I believe I signed it. It didn't get signed all the way around, I don't think. I'm pretty sure it didn't.
What happens if tomorrow, I don't know what's happened, but the company decides they're going to sign the contract that the board approved, the original company? I mean, we need to have a process in place to officially notify the company the board chooses to cancel that contract. Because the board approved it in the motion to approve the contract.
Cards in front of the horse. That's what you're saying.
Well, we have to, if the board chooses to approve this contract, we need to notify, we need to notify the former company that the board's canceled that contract.
We've already, we've already gone through council, informed E N G that we do not need their services anymore.
Well, the board needs to make that decision because the board approved the contract. The legal council can't make that decision on behalf of the county board. They can help you to process.
No, I understand. General Services is different than the other contracts.
Yeah.
Commissioner Laugner.
I'm sure there's a cancellation clause in there.
Well, that went through corporate, yeah.
I'd like to say, keep going, Jack, you're asking all my questions.
Well, I'm just concerned that we do this property.
I am too. I mean, that's my concern, I don't know. If this contract has been to our attorney.
It was drafted by our attorney.
Okay. Is there any, is there any cost differential? Is, you know, what happens with, that he walked away? If it's a company, if he's getting more money, does that mean we're going to have to pay him more money? I just have a lot of concerns that. I also have some of the same concerns, that we're chasing a person. I understand you like this work. But I don't know that there's anybody justice qualified to do this work at this other company. You know, I don't know that. But I think that we should research it a little bit if we can before we jump ship.
Commissioner Sotis.
I'm sorry, this is a policy board. We just had our Drain Commissioner say that he wants this man because that's the man he needs to do the job. And setting up assessments is complicated. And doing the engineering work that goes along with it is complicated. And I know you now have your plate full of a lot of different communities that are looking at different types of assessments and different types of work. So from my perspective, if this is the person that Steve wants to continue engaging with, the question then becomes, what do we need to do to make that happen? Not to question whether or not that's the right choice, but what do we need to do to move it forward? Because we set policy, but I think it's, it's our department directors and our elected officials who tell us what it is they need to get the job done. And Steve has just done that.
Commissioner Laugner.
I am sorry, but I totally disagree. It is up to us to approve contracts, that is what we do. We do take recommendations from our employees. We take recommendations from our elected officials. But it is our job to approve contracts. What we need to know is, are we going to have two companies? Do we have contracts with two companies tomorrow morning? We need to know that, that's what we do. That is our policy. That is our job. So I appreciate it, but I, I think there's absolutely no way we can take action on this tonight until we know where we stand.
Is that all right?
Well, yeah, I, I have the cart in front of the horse at the. Yeah.
Steve, there's no annual fee as part of the agreement with E N G. There's no annual fee, right?
It's time and materials with regards to what he's doing on specialists that don't become districts.
So the contract that the board approved, we don't want to get charged if you want to write some work, right?
Correct.
E N G can't come back and say.
We own 50% of the contract.
For this work, for this year.
Correct, it's just on what work he can build that he and I work on. It's, basically what's happening is we're looking at the different areas that could be districts. And some of them will turn into districts, and some of them won't. County Road Commission went ahead on Stony Point and did some ditching and culverts, and it was quite a job that they did. So that one doesn't have to become a district. So they'll, that, they just stepped up and did it. I didn't think they would, but we had a changeover at the Road Commission, they did it. It's a different program there. So that was great, you know? So that one doesn't become a district, but we had done some work on it, some initial work. So that fits into the general services, which is a contact with the county. It's not one with the Drain Commissioner. So, and I, I realize that, then there are, Sutton's Bay Village might step up and do Broadway. We've done a little bit of work on that one. We don't know that one yet. Village of Empire may do a district, or they might not. And, but that one probably will go district even if they don't. But it's all the work that goes into them. And if they become a district, then it's my contract and it gets paid back.
Well, let's just do this in the proper way. I'm sure we can get it accomplished, and we'll just do it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Commissioner Lawson.
Could we, are we willing to take a motion now to cancel that contract with Engineering Corporate?
I assume the terms are the same of this contract and the previous one, where it says on Article One, disagreement may be terminated at any time with or without cause by either the county or the engineer upon seven calendar days prior notice.
Comment?
Seven.
Seven.
So if you wish to do that, you have to pass a motion canceling the original contract. That would authorize the, to send a letter canceling it if you wish to switch. Would you agree, Steve?
The original contract, I think, was for a one-year span. So it's expired.
Well, let's make sure that that's.
Yeah. We don't remember signing.
Yes.
One, and I'm quite certain that it didn't get signed on the other end, but I will definitely have that in front of you. I apologize.
Okay. Then I do think we should have a motion to cancel that, or make, given the seven days' notice that we're going to cancel the other contract. I think that would.
It has expired.
Are you sure it expired?
It was a one-year contract, it was done on the 31st of December. That the initial contract was for a one-year through December 31st.
Well, the problem is.
We'd better find out. I guess we just.
Better have it in front of you. Better have it in front of you. I don't, I apologize.
Do anything with it.
And I made a fine.
All right.
Commissioner Anser.
You realize the new contract has no engineer names in it either. You're not hiring a person, you're hiring this firm. It just says engineer, it doesn't have names. You realize that, right?
Okay, let's just take a five-minute break here and look at the contract. You know, yes, Commissioner Swedest.
But just, just to say that I fully realized we have responsibility for contracts, and Commissioner Laugner actually answered the request I was making, which was, what do we do to support Steve and to help him move forward? Not to select the person, but in dealing with the contract. So thank you, Commissioner Laugner.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's just, just be back here at 10:20, please. So, okay, we'll call this meeting.
Gems of Wiki, Steve and I went through the board practice from 2018 and 2019. In 2018, the board approved the contract with.
E N G.
E N G. For 2019, that expired December 31st, 2019. So that's expired. However, in November of 2019, you renewed the contract for 2020. The company never signed it, but my concern is if you wish to proceed, you should cancel that contract because you have a motion in place authorize the contract for one year for 2020.
With E N G that needs.
With E N G. So if you wish to go forward, so right now you have a current contract in place for E N G.
Commissioner Lawson.
I do, do move that we cancel our contract with E N G.
Second.
Everybody understand that? We have to give them a seven-day notice, I think.
Well, we will follow the terms of the contract.
Okay.
Commissioner Laugner.
I have not been through this entire contract yet. I just missed it if I got it by email, so I would have to apologize. But I just got it tonight. But looking through it, and the reason I'm asking this now is because if we terminate one, we've got to put another in place soon, I would guess. So where are the
hourly?
Fees? Like where, where is the compensation? And what, how does that differ? Because I'm not seeing the exhibit. It says there, okay. How does, how does this differ from what we were before? Is it the same? I don't have the other contract.
The contract for last year was $5,000. The contract for this year will be for $7,500. It also was $7,500 for E N G. The request was to go up because of the high number of jobs that are happening in Leona right now. So the request was to go from $5,000 to $7,500 for the year for the as-needed work.
I don't see, see that, I see hourly. So you're saying there's a max, there's a cap?
Yeah, not to exceed $7,500.
Page two of seven, item number six.
Okay. So on the fee schedule, that would be the fee schedule up until that point? And then after that point, he would be pro bono?
No, no, it's for a year. It's for the.
Okay.
For the year 2020.
The cap debt, there is a cap?
Mm-hmm, that's right. It's under number six, it says compensation shall not exceed $7,500. Is the fee schedule the same?
Right. So, so this is my question. So he's going to get, this engineer is going to use this hourly up until $7,500. What if that's gone in July?
Then I come to the board and ask for more money if it's needed. But last year, he made $5,005.
But you say that there's more work.
Pardon?
But there's more work, you indicated there's more work?
There are a lot of districts that are in, have approached me and want a drainage district for their area. So there's more people in the county that are asking for me to look at their area that could become a district.
So do I have a question then? If we're under contract with the other company for the same amount of money or for the $5,000 for 2020?
I'm quite sure that the new E N G contract was for also $7,500.
But we don't, we don't know, and we're assuming, and that kind of just concerns me about that tonight.
The document is out in my hand.
Hours either.
Apologize.
Commissioner Anser.
You got $5,000 in your budget. Where's the rest of the money coming from?
Good question.
You, you know, you don't have any excess money floating around in your budget out there for some other project that you're going to move over here for that additional $2,500 as well, you know? So you're basically coming to the board and asking for an additional money that wasn't in your budget. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, that could be a correct statement. I don't have the budget in front of me.
No, it's, it's in the packet.
Okay.
It shows that you had, for your 2020 proposed budget, you had $5,000 in contracted services.
That's exactly what I did on, on that date. That's what the contract was. So I guess, you know, the, the ask is to increase it to $7,500. And then the contract comes at a yearly basis versus the budget basis. So it, the next budget, I'll say. So it, the next budget, I'll say seventy-five hundred, not knowing what.
It might be ten thousand.
Well, I, I didn't know that, you know, we were going to get a day lused by rain and the people come and ask for me to look at them to see if they might be a drainage district or not.
If any of these projects end up doing, do becoming a district, we can recover those costs from the assessment for that district. But those, those projects that do not become a district of themselves, we're just, any money that we spent in your budget, we're just out.
We're out that money, yes.
So. Are we going to recover the seventy-five hundred?
How, how many of the projects that I'm working on can go to district is the question.
Right.
And, and will the, will the County Road Commission pick one up? Will Suttons Bay Village pick up Broadway and not have it become a district? I don't know, I can't answer those questions until they physically happen. I need to work on them and approach them and present to the Suttons Bay Village, present to Empire Village, this is how a district happens and this is the procedure. And, and this is my engineer and he explains the procedure and they look at it and then there are votes to be taken. County Road Commission has to vote to do something. Empire Village, the townships, entities have to go and get signatures. And the petition, the application is the first round of signatures. And that is kind of the easy part, the second round of signatures is for the petition that actually makes the ball roll and have the taxes happen. Those are tougher signatures to get. So those processes are all up in the air until they actually happen, board determination happens, then we have a district and now we get the money back.
You know, I'm just struggling because every department could say that with their budget. You understand what I'm saying?
I understand totally. And I just have to say it like it is.
I understand.
Mr. West.
My question for you today is, we got through last year's budget with the old company. In November, we contracted for the same company for twenty twenty. And I'm not sure what your answer was as far as the contracted amount for twenty twenty with the old company. Was it five thousand or was it seventy-five hundred dollars?
I know the intent was to move it to seventy-five hundred, I think that happened. I don't have the contract in front of me.
With that said, how much of that budgeted amount has already been utilized and paid to the old company? Which would tell us.
The twenty twenty budget?
Yes.
He was not working in twenty twenty.
So there's no money out of your budget?
There's, there's no twenty twenty money.
That's been used.
I. Correct.
Okay, so the point that Commissioner Ansorgi was saying, you came to us in the, at budget time. Okay, and requested five thousand dollars for your budget. And I think we ratified our contract in September, was it, Michelle, or October?
I think it's November.
November. So it was about the same timeframe that when we were developing and cementing our budget, that you were requesting more funds for the twenty twenty. So I was just wondering why you didn't adjust your budget dollars.
Do a late adjustment?
Pardon?
Do a late adjustment?
Do a late adjustment to this board while we were still in budget, in budget discussions.
That's a good question. I, I'd have to look at the exact time when we started talking, Brian and I, about, you know, is that enough money for the next year? And whether there was an overlap, it didn't occur to me.
Okay.
So I don't, I guess that's my only answer, it didn't occur that I could, I could do that.
And I bring that point to you today because going forward, we are flexible. We recognize that you have a mandated job in the county, but, you know, it would alleviate some of this conversation today. And dotting the i's and crossing the t's works better for this board. We are the fiduciaries of the dollars that we spend. So I, I'm not so sure I feel comfortable today eliminating even the terms of contract, unless you can tell me that this, what we're looking at, is the existing contract that we ratified in November.
Jen is still up in.
Okay. So without knowing if we're going to be penalized for voiding a contract that's out there, I'm not comfortable with taking any action on this issue today. And if I may say, if there is an urgent need for your department to have this in place, once we do get the information, there is no reason that we can't call a special meeting for an urgent matter. Okay? Not that I want to call a special meeting, but if there is a sense of urgency for you to do your job, then that would be to me the appropriate.
Before the tenth of March.
Yes, before the tenth of March. Well, even it would have to go to regular.
We could do a special meeting the day we were already here.
Okay, yeah. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Exactly, and I appreciate that, yep.
I appreciate what you do for the county, but again, you know.
Yeah.
You can't tie our hands.
Commissioner West.
I don't see any problem with getting rid of the old contract. I don't, you know, if you don't want to do business with that company, I mean, to me, it's neither here nor there. We're not going to make any decision about going forward today with this contract until we find out more information, so, you know. I don't see why, we can't just vote.
But we do have a motion on the table.
Yeah, but I would like to, I would like to vote in favor of it, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Are there any other comments? Okay, all those, I'd like.
Well, my only comment is that. Until I make that decision, I'd like to hear that from our attorney and have the advice of our attorney. I can read this contract and read this one way, I can read the old contract and read it one way, but I'm not an attorney. And I don't know if there's anything in there, so I would wait for his advice myself, so I won't support the motion.
I would admit my motion to include with consultation from our attorney.
Okay, with a second?
Is that me? Whoever did it, I've, I've lost the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was so slow.
And can you read the motion again?
Motion by Wes to cancel the contract with E-N-G. And now he is amending it with.
With approval of our corporate counsel.
Any, any other comments?
No.
I'm, I'm just going to do one vote with the, the amendment because it was by the person who made it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Thank you very much.
Good move, Mr. Wes.
Okay, so we're going to move on then? And we'll, we'll wait on the other contract, all right?
Yeah, we'll have to find that, thank you.
Yeah, all right, so then, now we'll be to the, the recommendation that we apply to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Recreation Passport. Is that the one? Motion number one here on it?
And that's, if I may add to that?
Sure.
That's to apply for a recreational passport grant as opposed to or instead of a natural resources trust fund grant. If you recall at the executive session in January, we requested that, that you give Parks and Rec the authority to go for a resources trust fund grant. We're switching that and asking for authority to go for a recreational passport grant. And if you'd like to know why, I will explain it.
Commissioner answer.
I'm confused, didn't we already vote on this?
No, we voted on the number two on this page on the hearing.
We voted to have a public hearing for what we haven't voted on yet. Is that clear?
Yeah, you understand, so we did number two first, now we're doing number one here, that's on that, this page.
There's two motions on late addition number two.
Yeah, yeah.
And we did the second one.
Any, any other comments? Commissioner Wes.
I will, I will add that the Parks and Recreation Commission had a special meeting last week. We, we were there with Dave and with Steve. They had looked at the language of the old grant that we approved and looked at this passport grant. It was our collective assessment, unanimous approval to ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the passport grant instead of the original DNR grant. We had better chances of, of, of having a successful application.
Mr. Law. Did you want?
I was just pointing where, we don't have a motion on that.
No, we do that.
For, okay. So I, do you want to make a motion?
I, I will make the motion that we give the Parks and Recreation Commission approval to apply for a Michigan DNR recreation passport grant instead of the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant with a county match of up to ninety-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Did you want to say anything to it?
Just what I've said.
Mr. Law.
I'm, I'm going to yield to Commissioner Rush, because I think she has, she had her hand up first.
I have a concern here in regards to, originally, this grant amount was for two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And at that time, you asked the board for a, a match of, of ninety-five or up to ninety-five thousand dollars. Today, you come before us with a maximum grant available to you for a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. However, you're still asking for ninety-five thousand dollars. That cannot be the match amount for that grant.
I'm sorry, when you say it cannot be?
It cannot be. According to what I, when I read the minutes of your board meeting, there was some discussion about the match being around thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thirty, thirty-nine percent.
So I'm just wondering.
I'm, I'm not sure where your thirty-five thousand, that was part of our discussion?
It was part of your discussion at your board meeting. I believe it's in the minutes. It was right around thirty-five thousand or thirty-nine thousand, so.
Always a percent, I think is what you're getting at, because that's what I have highlighted, right? So if you take. I'm sorry.
Is it all right if she helps you out with that, or should I say, this Commissioner Ansorgi had his hand up here. Go ahead, let her, she wants to read that, go ahead, Commissioner.
There are no budget numbers on here, what was, what was approved in the budget? Do you have any money approved in the budget to, as matching money for this grant?
Well, I'm not sure I understand.
Where's the money coming from? Yeah, Steve, you know, please, if you know, help out here, but, you know.
Well, the ninety-five, the ninety-five thousand.
Be filled out for us to let us know that, yes, you, you know, you included this in your budget and you're coming to us now saying, yes, I want to spend the money that we approved in our budget. If we didn't, if it's not in the budget, it should say zero. If it's in the budget, we should have a dollar amount here. And it's just blank. So my question is, you're asking for money, where's the money coming from?
We've been setting ten thousand aside each year, this is the third year.
No.
Just for clarification.
I know what his question is.
There is no money set aside over here.
I know, I know, the agreement was that we would not spend ten thousand, it would go back into the general fund. Because we knew that that was part of our agreement as Parks and Rec, to make sure that this money went back to the general fund. So that we would do that at least three years and have thirty thousand of the ninety back into the general fund from Parks and Rec. That was the agreement that we went on and, and I don't have the minutes in front of me to show, I know that should say zero. I know it should. And I've been working with Laurel.
Is there ten thousand dollars in the budget then, is that what you're telling me?
I'm telling you that each year for the last three years, we've set, we've had ten thousand go back into the general fund.
Let me try to clarify, thank God for this. Several years ago, when they first applied, they were willing to commit ten thousand dollars every year from their budget year after year. However, that grant was never approved. So there was no money set aside because that grant was denied by the state. So, so there was no money set aside because there was no expenditures. This year, if they apply, I think you're saying you are willing to set money aside from the general. You're not going to ask the board for additional money, you're going to take ten thousand from the approved amount every year? For ten, for three years, is that what you're saying?
I guess what I'm saying is that we have been allowing ten thousand to go back into the general fund, knowing that that was our responsibility.
Chasing this grant.
To, to do the grant, to chase the grant, so we would have that money going back to the general fund. Ten thousand a year going back. That's part of the agreement that we had with the board to help pay that match. We are, in essence, asking for up to that amount of match from the county board. That the money will come from the general fund, the same fund that we've been allowing ten thousand a year to go back into. We are here to ask for a match, just like we did for the other grant. This one has to have a match too. And the match has to come from county board general fund. We have some money in our budget. I can't say right here at this point, I don't have it on the, on the line there, so, but.
We did not include any, any money in the budget for this project?
Other than what I just.
Twenty, twenty budget, there is no matching dollars set aside.
Okay.
The board during the summer said you would discuss it when they asked for the grant. So there's no money set aside, correct, Michelle?
Correct, there's no money set aside.
Commissioner Law.
So my question falls along the line of, well. The motion doesn't really say how much you want to go for. There's two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars available that you're going to go for?
That's not available.
No.
No.
Recreational passport grant.
Is a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty.
Okay, so if you're going to ask for the hundred and fifty, you can do a thirty-nine percent match. So.
One, one of the situations that we're facing.
I guess, let's, let me finish, so I guess my question is, how did you get to ninety-five percent?
Ninety-five thousand.
Or ninety-five thousand?
Because that's the amount that.
We had set aside the first time.
Set aside.
Okay.
That was our original request with the Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant.
So if, if you have a good shot at this grant with a fifty percent match of seventy-five thousand, shouldn't you just ask for seventy-five thousand?
It's fifty-eight, yeah, that's okay.
Thirty-nine, if you go with thirty-nine percent match.
Yeah.
It's fifty-eight thousand five hundred.
That's fifty-eight thousand, but a fifty percent match would be seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, you're right.
And then you'd have a better shot at the, at the grant. So, so really, what you're asking.
I think that's a question.
So, yeah, so rather than ask for ninety-five of us tonight, you should either ask fifty-eight thousand match and take a shot, or fifty thousand and get a better shot. Does that make sense?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand in, at fifty percent and have a better shot.
Commissioner Rush.
In the information that's been provided us this evening.
One of the things you have not been provided with this evening is that.
If I could ask my question.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Wesel asked, have you decided on a match? So my question to you is, is. So, my question to you is, is can you decide on the match amount when you're applying for this $150,000 maximum grant?
Yes.
Okay. So, you have a range that you can request as a match. That's, is that a correct statement?
That we can request of you for a match?
Okay.
Do you mean requesting of you?
Yes.
Yes. Part of the problem is, the Parks and Rec Commission itself has not determined the full scope of the application. That's, we meet tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, I can't bring to you a recommendation of a specific application and the line items of exactly what we're going to be going for, and the cost of that, and what, what match we would choose.
Okay. My other point is, is this grant is a maximum grant of 150,000. So, if you are not successful at 100 percent of the maximum amount available to you, and let's say you only get a $50,000 grant, but yet you're asking the Board to give you a 95,000 match. You don't even, you don't, we don't have enough information to make a decision about this, in my estimation.
I, I, I think the problem is, this was written quickly. What we talked about at the Parks and Recreation was, instead of asking for a $250,000 to $350,000 grant.
That's one grant.
We're going to ask for 150,000. And we were talking at that time of a, of a range of between 39, which is a minimum, or up to 50 percent, I think, match, which was a maximum. So, I think what we're really asking, despite what this paper says, that what we had in the commission the other day was from 58.5 to 75,000 on a $150,000 grant. I believe that's accurate. And if the grant is only 100,000, then we would reduce those figures to between 39 percent and 50 percent of whatever the grant amount was. We weren't asking this Board to approve the budget. We were asking this Board to approve the writing of and submission of a grant. And the budget approval would be, and the grant acceptance would be, come at a later time.
Make that echo.
How about we have the, the language for the grant, and then we, as a Board, would know exactly how much we would have to put forth as a match instead of trying to guess.
We're, Mr. Chair, we're running against a, a deadline now. So, the language is, if you accept what I just said, the language would be in the minutes. We're talking about 39 percent to 50 percent of the total grant award. So, it would be, our liability would be 58.5 to 75,000. That'd be the maximum. And if the grant award was less, it would be less than that. But we must, March is the time this grant has to be prepared.
Correct.
So, that is why we're, we had this special meeting.
Commissioner Hand.
Typically, these grants that you apply for, you put in there how much you're going to match. It goes in with the grant application, and that's part of the scoring when they score those grants, whether you get the grant or not. So, we have, we have, if you're going to submit the grant, you have to know what the match is going to be.
Well, I'm just wondering, yeah, I'm just wondering, though, we've, we've got to have a public hearing, and this is all going to be done by March 1st. And don't we have to have an amount in the public hearing? And tell them what's going on, if we're going to, and what we're going to be doing? Because I don't even know what this is going to be for.
But I, I can't bring that to you until Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec Commission makes a recommendation to you, and we don't, we aren't going to address that until tomorrow night.
But haven't you been working on this for three years?
Not on the recreational passport grant switch.
Well.
We have.
Commissioner Rushden.
That, that argument doesn't resonate with me, because I'm looking at this sheet of paper here that says, you called for a special session, and you are in special session on February 14th. Okay? So, in my estimation, this should have been decided and then moved forward to this Board. Today, you are not prepared, unfortunately. And I will not support this as it is presented.
Mr. Law.
Okay. Parks and Recreation has the plan, and the plan is the same as what they asked for previous two years. Veronica Valley, walking paths around the pond. Am I correct, Dave?
Well, we've certainly had to pare back that original plan.
So, that was the plan. This is pared down.
Correct. Because we can't ask for as, as much, we can't go for as big a bite with the recreational passport thing.
Go for it, but it doesn't, you qualify for it.
So, by pairing down and going for the other grant for $150,000, if you were to pick a match other than the 95,000, which is, which is what I think was in the motion. And ask for, I, I think we need to ask for the $75,000 match, or, or the $58,000 match, or somewhere in between, and state that we want to move forward with that, I believe.
I, I would pull my motion, I would draw my motion, and ask Commissioner Lawner to redo the, I agree with what she just said.
Is that okay with the second?
Besides the second?
I believe so.
Okay.
So, all right, so we're, so we're going to just, we'll redo this. I mean, do you have till March 31st? Is that what it is? That has, this is the deadline?
Well, to get the entire application loaded, yes, we have until March 31st. It has to be filed by that night.
Yeah. Well, may I suggest something else? You, you just scheduled a public hearing for March 10th, which is a Tuesday. Then, there's executive meeting on the 10th also, that you can finalize this. And the Board can officially give you authority to do it March 17th.
That's correct.
So, really, nothing has to be done today? I mean, if you set the public hearing, which you've done. If the public hearing is the 17th, shouldn't you have the public hearing before you vote to give permission?
The public hearing is the 10th.
I mean, on the 10th.
And if we vote at the executive committee that day, and it goes forward to 17th, then, yeah.
You still have two weeks on to submit the proposal, right?
Yes. Keep our public hearing.
And the question?
Well.
So, I.
Why would you have the public hearing if the Board votes today on something? Wouldn't be the purpose of the public hearing.
Well, we have to have a public hearing.
Well, that's.
Right. But I don't think we should have a public hearing until.
What are you going to tell them? How much money? What's the match?
And what is the project?
Right.
Right. And what's the project?
All that has to be in place.
So, with this timeline, and I, not pardon the Parks and Rec side politics, I really don't know. You're having a special, another meeting tomorrow, you said?
Tomorrow, yes.
Can you finalize all this, bring it to the public hearing on the 10th, to the executive committee on the 10th? The Board make a recommendation, and then finally prove the 17th. I give you two weeks to submit it prior to the March 31st.
That's exactly the intent, intention of our request tonight.
We'd have to bring everything for the public hearing, and it would be presented to you also.
Absolutely.
Correct? Is that?
So, that work?
That works.
So, really, the decision the Board made to set up the public hearing is all that you need to see?
Well, we have, it was my understanding, based on our original discussion, that the only authority we had at this point was to go after a Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant.
That's true, yes. That was approved.
And so, the item number one under the special, the late additions tonight, was to ask for you, for you to give Parks and Rec authority to go for not a Resources Trust Fund Grant, but a recreational passport.
Okay.
The details of what the project will be that we are going to go for, Parks and Rec has not been able to make that decision because of this change coming quickly. I mean, this has all happened because about four days before your last executive session was the earliest that we got this year's scoring and weighting guide for both of these grant applications. And reviewing that, in the week following your, your January executive sessions, the first time where we, being myself and the two consultants from Gosling Zubac, looking at this scoring system, when we are not going to make it with a Resources Trust Fund Grant. We have a much better chance, as slim as that might be, but we have a better chance with a recreational passport grant. But that recognition is now only, what, two weeks old? And we have yet to have the full meeting of the Parks and Rec Commission to consider the full size of the grant we plan we would go for. The request tonight is for you to give us the authority to go for that grant, so we can put that package together, so you can see it on the 10th of March.
Commissioner.
You actually have made two requests on this late addition today.
Correct.
You have made two requests. The first one is to apply, excuse me, apply for the alternate grant. And the second request is for a $95,000 match. It's all rolled into one. But for me, that's two separate actions. And the reason I oppose this is because you put this $95,000 in here.
Well, it is up to 95,000.
It doesn't matter. The 95,000 is in there, which I think you're asking for, you have, you have the opportunity maximum, 150,000. You know, and as Commissioner Ansorbi said, your scoring depends on the, the, is reflected, the type of scoring you get is reflected by the match. Well, why would we not be in a better position if we're going to put $95,000 out there? How do you, you don't even know what your projects are. You don't even know if your projects are $95,000. So, you don't even know what your, we, we don't have an idea of what your, your plan is for this grant.
That's correct.
We don't know the dollar amount that you're going after. And to me, the $95,000 is not proportionate to the grant amount.
Commissioner Russell.
I would like to move that we grant the Parks and Recreation Commission approval to apply for a Michigan Department of Natural Resources Recreation Passport Grant instead of the Michigan Natural Resources Grant. Details to be submitted for approval to this group after the public hearing.
Did we not have a motion on the floor originally?
No, he removed it in the second. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
So, we did not have one.
A second, yeah.
Okay, everyone understands, this is just switching it. We had approved the MDNR, whatever, and now we're going to the passport. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes five to two. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think then we can move on now to information technology. Commissioner Rushden.
I would move that we waive bid requirements and recommend the purchase of 30 new Dell workstations at a cost not to exceed $49,269.50, with those funds to come from the Data Processing Fund Number 636.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Then, we're at the Trebisher Administration Post-It's-Meter Lease. Commissioner Law.
I would move to approve a lease from automated business equipment of a post-based Vision A7 with automatic theater, including annual maintenance agreement and meter rental as presented. Funds to come from 635.
Second.
653.
653. I did this the other day.
653, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Lawner.
I would move to appoint Richard Ishburning to the Land Bank Fast Track Authority for a partial term expiring December 31, 2020.
Support. I think it's, it's the next one.
It's the next one.
She's doing it in the order here.
Oh, yeah, I did it by order of executive.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Lawner. Next one, or Commissioner Sutis Little, did you want to do that?
Sure. I move to the Lina County Board of Commissioners to appoint TF Diagas, TF Taxiatus, to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to a partial term expiring on December 31, 2020.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Lawner.
I would move to appoint David McCollough to the Veterans Affairs Administration Committee for a partial term expiring December 31, 2020.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And that brings us to job description. Commissioner Wessel.
I move to approve the revised job description for the GAS tech position as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And that brings us to the Verizon Tower proposal. Did you want to come forward, Mr. Price?
Let me just start on update. You have a copy of the email that Matt received today, outlining, from last week's discussion, the Board asked for more information on what sites they explored prior to coming to county. And so, what they have, Jeff Hornaby has emailed from them that listed the sites that they explored and the reasons they chose not to go with those sites.
So, this response is from their attorney?
It's from whoever's the representative, yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Robert Cobell, yes.
Do you want to have Mr. Price speak first, or let him finish his thoughts?
Did you want to come up and go through, through your discussion, yes?
I forgot where I was there. I'm at half-pullers. I kind of lose it.
See, you were. At the neighbors.
Well, Mr. Price, in their email, they did say they look at your property, and the reason they chose not to go with this is it's too low for the elevation. The hill would block the signal. That's in their email. I know you haven't seen.
Is that the one you got?
Yeah.
This morning, yes.
Yeah, I don't know how that got out so quick.
It's on their email.
Pardon me?
Yeah, it's in their email to us.
I don't have any of that stuff. No, my point I make here is that who know what, who knew what and when? I know a little bit about bargaining myself. I put a lot of attorney fees out there. Jim Williams is my attorney over it, and he also is the attorney. And I believe Verizon owns the tower over here for Eddie Clarkes. And, and I'm sure we got sharp attorneys here. But if you figure this whole thing out, you know, they, what they would have had to pay me for a road and that, they begged me to be there. I already told them there was a tower there. They said, that don't matter anything. They checked the whole thing out, verbatim, you know, give me verbatim all the thing. So, my point is that they would have had to put in a decent road. Second thing is, and I'm not crying foul here, I, I think that, I guess what upsets me more than anything is because Eric loaded to the fact that, at one of these meetings here in AT&amp;T was going to put one on the Hannover, but he didn't know, I don't think, at the time, that AT&amp;T was, who a different company was also dealing with, with Farisa, guy that had left here. I was trying to help Farisa for a road up there, because there's already a road to Hannovers to go either way there, but they wanted to come my way. So, then, when you figure it out, Verizon would have to build a road too, which they could have used the same road. I guess what's upsetting here, and I don't know, you know, I know that you can't let out things and that, but when you see this Enterprise 1115, 19, Farisa didn't even know it either, you're going to tell me that, that there's nobody sitting on this Board that didn't know Verizon wanted to come on this site? You all knew that, or didn't know that?
Yes, Mr. Ansorbi gave updates throughout the year.
Pardon me?
Yeah, that was no secret. Mr. Matt Ansorbi came and gave updates throughout the board. Mr. Matt Anzorbi came and gave updates throughout the year.
Oh, so then Matt knew it?
I didn't know.
To let you guys know.
Yeah, the board was aware that they were interested.
Okay.
None of the details.
Because Faris, which is dealing with them, didn't know that this ad was in the paper either, you know? So, and Matt and I were talking as much as we could before, because this was about two, three years there, when Matt told me Verizon wanted to come here. Then he started dealing with me, and he hadn't heard anything, so I let him know what was going on. So I guess my point I'm making here, and then I'm just quoting from Melinda the other night about private enterprise, being they're going to use this road, which is fine, you're not going to, your cell phone rate's not going to go down, is it going to work better for everybody? Who knows? We know, no, we got a dead spot here, these people back here, they're on Verizon, they live just down the road from me a mile, and they have a trouble with their signal. Is it going to help all of them? If we're talking, if we're talking private enterprise here, then I guess my suggestion would be is that why wouldn't they contact the people next door here and use this road, which is a county road, to go up there? I mean, at least be involved with them rather than try to go up here for a free road, so to speak. So if that's what they're going to do, which it doesn't bother me at all, I just thought there was some misinformation out there for the rest of us, not that you guys had any, any fault, fault in what went on there that this is not, because what they do, they get their tower space, unless you're really sharp on this, I'm sure our attorneys are real sharp, they keep hanging more and more people on it, and then you hardly, and that's what happened to my friend, he didn't get a lot of revenue from it. So I think in this case, I'm just going to say, they can say that the location didn't work, they would have known that three years ago. What didn't work for them is the money that they didn't want to pay me. And I told Mr. West how much money I lost, and he told me I could afford it, so, yeah, I hold him up there. So my point is that I don't know what you guys' thoughts are on that, but beware of them, they're pretty, you know, they're sharks, all three of them, because you got, you know, I'm not even sure the spectrum isn't tied to this whole deal too with that, because that's old news, but most people don't know what the hell's going on there when they, you know, when you get your phones in. You can call AT&amp;T lower, and your deal with Verizon, and they want a bundled deal, and then you lose your home number. I mean, that's happened to my friends, and they're all, like I said, they're all in it together there, so whatever. I'm just, now you know as much as I know, I guess, for more. Any questions?
Any questions for him? No, I think, you know, we have, we did know most of that, but.
You guys held back a lot of information on the people then.
Right.
Must have been a lot of meetings that we didn't know about, right? Was that a yes?
Yes. No, there's not meetings that you don't know about. Go ahead.
So the answer's no. We haven't dealt with this as a commission hardly at all.
Hardly at all?
No. Matt was talking, Brian, I think the proposal to us maybe early last fall or mid-fall.
November.
It's in November. Yeah, so this does disturb me that, you know, this proposes a tower built here, that this is already in there, and we hadn't even voted on the concept.
I'm not worried about that. That's not what concerns me. Concerns me.
It concerns me though, and, and, yeah, it kind of boils down to what you said. I don't think they want to pay you what, but they perhaps should be paying you because this is an easy site for them. And that was my concern from the very beginning. They're going to take advantage of our campus here.
I'm not hollering about that at all, and I know a little bit about negotiations. One side doesn't tell the other one. And I guess prior to November 15th, you knew this ad was going in the paper?
No.
Okay, that's my point that I bring it up here.
To me.
And I'm not, I'm saying that it's not a bad idea to put it here, but the point is they didn't want to pay me. They come along and say it don't work, and they wouldn't work, and they bothered me for three years, and they had talked to Matt two years before that, so where they worked against the county here, and then AT&amp;T comes in, which is basically, they're all in it together there. So the bottom line is, I think I would have felt better, and a lot of people would have felt better, is have that Verizon guy come up here, because they're supposed to have all this study they know, and tell everybody how good their cellphone business or their cellphone will work around this whole area here. But instead of that, I come to this meeting, and then the Verizon guy is here, and it's like a rubber stamp deal. And I had to go to a basketball game, which, you know, and Faris didn't know either. And incidentally, the other thing that's going on here, when AT&amp;T was looking at the sites, everybody gets confused here, but my property's in Leland Township, and Faris is the guy that, the gentleman that was here, that property where that pole is, the model where they wanted to put it, is in Leland Township, but there was never a permit, the zoning permit wrote for that property because the zoning administrator never caught on to going up there. It's not in Suttons Bay Township. So then when Faris went over to Leland Township, they wanted him to start all over because it was a non-issue, because they never had wrote the permit to start with.
Let me try to summarize where we are, so.
Pardon me?
Let me try to summarize where we are.
Thank you.
The first time that we received proposal was at the November 2019.
Okay.
So, did we know they were exploring a possibility? Yes, there was no secret about that.
No, but did you know prior to November, oh, the first time? I guess what irritates me is, is did you guys know, or who given the authority, or even given the idea that, let me get the papers straight here, and I'm not trying to think, November 15th that they put the ad in the papers?
No, I can actually respond to that because Commissioner Laugner and I were driving up to Gaylord to meet with our good friends, the state police, when Mr. Laugner called Commissioner Laugner to talk about the ad, asked if I knew anything about it, and we checked in and said, "No, we did not authorize any ad."
I mean, that's my only point.
So that's, so we got that all the way. So that was, I know it was November 18th.
Yep.
Because we did not.
Yep.
So we're basically where we are, though. The only authorization that was given is to enter the contract negotiations. So we did that. You authorized that in November. We did, they presented that in November. We negotiated during December. In January, they came up with, they say, is their final and best offer. You came last week, asked us to get more research on what sites they view other than this site. So in the email, you have that thing. So really, you have a couple options. One is whether you wish to have a tower here. If the answer is yes, then we have to continue with negotiations, because we don't have a financial agreement. We have what they say is the best offer, which you have not discussed. The other option is, if you want a tower, there is a third option, that there is a company that puts towers on behalf, it would be a county tower, we have to form a partnership with them, and we will dictate what type of equipment, which companies go on it, and what cost. So that is an option also. Or you can simply say, "No, you don't wish to have a tower here. Thank you," and you can move on. They proposed that we could put our equipment on their tower, and I don't think any of us want to do that. We want to control the tower that we have. In response to the thing about two towers, they said we could tear down our tower, move equipment on their tower. I don't think anyone wants to do that. So I guess discussion is whether you want to have a Verizon tower here. If that, then we could have to continue negotiation or accept their terms or proceed with other options.
Commissioner Russell.
It's my opinion that we go out there and look and see what is available to us and what's in our best interest as a county, as opposed to moving forward with this one contractor today, because we really don't know what our options are. And if this is such a prime location, then it should be on our financial terms and not theirs.
Is that first sentence a motion?
That is my motion.
Support. Do we have a, do we have the first part of that as a motion?
Can I interject something here before you take that?
So her motion was to consider all other options that are available to us in regards to a tower on this property. And once we have reviewed the options available to us, I, you know, we hold off any decisions until we have all the information. Something for that effect. Support, support. Plenty, but.
We don't have enough information.
Do you want to speak to it?
Did you want to speak to it, Jeff?
No, I pretty much did. I do not think that moving forward with this today is appropriate for the reasons stated. We don't have enough information, and we don't control, or we don't control the tower number one. As I stated, that was a final offer. We looked at it, we didn't care for that final offer, so if they're telling us this is a prime location, then we need to exploit that to the benefit of the county and the citizens who live in this county.
Commissioner Russell.
I, I'm going to support the motion. I like the motion. I do want us not to lose sight of the fact that we do have a service interruption problem in our county, and I hope we can move forward looking at options.
Exactly.
But I agree that we do not need to approve this.
Commissioner Rednack.
At the Executive Committee, the motion, as it's stated here in the minutes, is that we're asking that the authorized administrator, the emergency director, Matt Anzorbi, to research and continue negotiations on a potential, on potential of a tower. So I think we should just go back to those minutes and have that same motion again, which doesn't say that we're just talking about the Verizon tower, because it doesn't mention Verizon at all, just a potential of a tower, which kind of, I guess, is the same motion in a slightly varied way.
So you're asking me to remove the name Verizon in my motion?
I don't know if you had it in there.
I didn't.
No, yeah.
No.
No, I think, yeah, no, I think.
I stand with my motion.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sutis Little.
I think looking at options is good. I do agree with Commissioner Rednack that what we had from last week does give us the necessary, does provide our administrator and Matt Anzorbi the necessary authority to move forward. I will also add, though, that the cost of developing, if we decide to go this route and we want to have the tower and we are developing it, the costs that we've been looking at in the Leland, Leland Internet Futures Team, which Matt Anzorbi is a member, is, runs a minimum million dollars. So just keep that in mind as we look at things. If we go down that route, we have to come up with the money. Verizon is looking at having a tower or whoever we might choose to go with, where they are fronting the costs and deciding who goes on it. So I'm not saying we don't look, I'm just saying bear in mind the cost.
Commissioner Laugner.
The reason I'm going to support this motion, instead of the motion from last week, is that intent is important in our motions. And in the intent of that motion was to, to continue negotiations with Verizon, and I, I don't, I don't want to approve that motion tonight. So I am going to support this motion because I think it's important to explore. If this really is a viable option, we're going to know. We'll find that out in our exploration. The important thing to me is the control of this campus, and that's why I won't support the tower with Verizon, is the idea of them controlling the tower, them bringing on other providers, those providers needing more pole barns below the tower, I just, I shudder to think of us losing control of that whole side of the campus. So at least if we control it, we've got that. If, if we do not build a tower here and if Verizon moves on, I'm even more happy with that. It sounds to me like they do have options, contrary to what they sat here and told us. So I will support this motion. I think that is in the best interest of the county overall.
Let me just clarify with towers. My limited knowledge of this, there's a broad spectrum of options. Option one, if they have a third company like Verizon come, build it, they own it, they pay you a fee. On the other spectrum is the county builds it, puts all the costs up front, controls it. There's also many options in between. There's partnerships, where the cost may be fronted by a company, they could be a long-term loan, it could be a partnership. There's a lot of things in between that we really have not explored. The deadline is only a deadline that Verizon gave us. It's not our deadline. Yeah. So we have been recently approached, and on just in general terms, about potential partnership for a tower here that we would control. As you saw from the email from last week from Verizon, they're not willing to negotiate on co-location fee.
Right.
I have inside sources in the company, in the business, I should say, not with Verizon, that say there's a substantial amount of money to be made off co-location fees, that usually the companies keep, not the landowners.
Not the landowners.
There also is an issue, yes, by law, they have to allow co-location, but they can make the conditions not favorable for other companies to come and locate too. So I think there are a lot of options. So it's not one or the other. Maybe we can find a good compromise. I think all of you are saying you'd love to have better service in the area.
Absolutely.
No one's saying that.
Right.
How can we have it done? Maybe Verizon will go that. Or maybe if we go to a third company, build a tower, Verizon will want to rent space from us on the tower. So I think there's a lot of different options that, we just haven't done enough research. Right now, we have one option in front of us.
Commissioner Russell.
One of the topics that I have really heard raised, are we going to follow the local zoning?
No.
I know we don't have to. Are we going to?
To be.
I'm just asking the question.
To be determined.
Yeah. We have not. And this whole building and everything, it's commercial and agricultural land.
So, you know, there is that issue out there with, you know, our township here.
Right. But there's nothing on this campus that meets zoning, or very little.
But now we're looking at bringing in, you know, possibly having an outside company come in. And that's a different animal in my mind, and I think we need to address that if we go in that direction. I guess it's my two cents.
Were we discussing that when Verizon wanted to put a tower on here?
I brought it up once.
Yeah. It was brought up before.
Okay.
Commissioner Rednack.
Could you repeat the motion?
Motion by Russell to consider all other options available to Leland County in regards to a tower on this property, and once options are reviewed, hold off on any decision until they have, they have all the information.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Price.
Can I give you a little comment here?
We're going to move on. You got, we got public comment here in a minute. Maybe just stay right there.
Oh, okay.
Relax.
I know, we do. We got, we got a little while, I said.
I think it's.
Yeah, yeah.
I move to approve the contract between Leland County and Leland Christian Neighbors. Has it been reviewed by corporate counsel? Mr. Commissioner?
Yes, it was drafted by corporate counsel.
Okay. Second.
Okay. I mean, again, I would say we're putting money in front of our ethics. That's what we do here every time we donate to a nonprofit. We put in our money. Money is more important to bring it into this county than live by our ethics.
Commissioner Anzorbi.
We don't do anything to solve the problem, though, is, you know, the real issue here is, shouldn't the compact be opened up and this issue addressed, you know, should, you know? And we just don't want to, we don't want to even talk about that.
We've talked about it plenty.
Commissioner Laugner.
Yes, I don't disagree with you, and yes, you're absolutely correct, but I don't see that we can do anything about it. At this point, because it's been awarded, I'm going to support it. I don't like it, but I'm going to support it because I agree that money should be going for county-funded operations.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes five to two. So the motion passes five to two. Okay, then that brings us then to number three, late edition. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I just passed this.
I had it ahead of Gold's.
What's that?
I had it ahead of Gold's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I had mine built after.
No, we have trees here. Do you don't mind joining Bruce?
I will go to his anthill.
We have public comment?
In a minute.
Sure. Go ahead.
Sorry.
That's fine. You don't have to move.
Hope my wife don't catch you. So we have late edition number three here.
It's a sign from God.
I think if we turn to page four on this, I think it's page four, it has the conclusion, so other than going through it all, you get an idea. Late edition number three.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Hi.
I'm Teresa Rose. I work for the Treasurer, and I'll rest on my document. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask me, but due to the late hour, I won't take up more of your time.
Thank you. Well, we're just not sure what the motion is supposed to be.
Are you going to support your appealing, this decision?
Yes, correct. My boss, John, has $5,000 that he's authorized to approve for service contracts, and this appeal, the amount will be greater than that. We do have the money in the 258 account, so we're not asking for money. What we're asking for is permission to spend the money because it's over the $5,000 that he's authorized to spend.
Well, and aren't you also asking to use a different lawyer here somewhere?
Yes, we are interested in using Clark Hill as opposed to Cole Stoker.
And he is an expert in P R Is?
He is. He was with the Attorney General's Office doing tax law.
So your motion is to allow the Treasurer to exceed...
His $5,000.
What is, to spend up to, how much?
Six, three, one, eight, six thousand three hundred and eighteen.
To spend, is that a correct number?
Six thousand three hundred and eighteen. I am looking for his right now.
Where did you get that figure?
Page six.
If you look on attachment three, is the bid from Clark Hill, and Attorney Larson is giving us a discounted rate.
Do you have a page number by chance?
I don't. It is attachment three.
It's $275 per hour.
Correct.
With an estimated cost of $10,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
So you would need to allow up to $10,000?
Correct. And that is an estimate. It's...
Sure.
Yeah.
I have to amend it if necessary.
But again, we do have the funds in the 258.
And that is to appeal. And the dis- motion also should include into to hire?
First of all, the amount's only 2,000. 5,000 isn't. It's 2,000 is the amount that you're allowed to spend. I don't have an E D S, so it's a little bit hard.
Now, where's this sheet? That everything that comes to us is supposed to be filled out with this sheet. Where is it? Doesn't it show me where the money is, if it's in your budget, you know, doesn't, I have none of that information in the format that we're used to seeing.
Okay. I did provide you with a trial balance report. I'm apologizing. I did not know there was a specific form. I'm happy to provide that. I can get it to you tomorrow.
You know, we don't know what's in your budget, what's not, unless we have that information in front of us.
I did provide you with a trial balance report that was printed month ending January 31, 2020, and the balance in the 258, which is the P R E audit fund, is $90,649.27. So those are the funds we have available to use for P R E purposes. So this $10,000 would come from that.
Commissioner Anderson, yes.
Are we getting any participation by the other taxing authorities that will also benefit from this?
Participation.
You know, if you were to prevail, the P R E money also goes to the schools and every, you know, you know, all of that money goes to other taxing authorities as well. Are we getting any participation from the township, from the schools, to help pay for the appealing of this?
No. The benefit from the appeal goes to the school operating budgets.
Commissioner Wessel.
I move to approve the proposed appeal of the Michigan Tax Tribunal as proposed by the Treasurer in the amount of $6,318.
I don't think that's the right amount.
Yeah.
Or whatever other amount it is.
That would see $10,000.
Wait a second. I need clarification. $6,300 is the Cole Stoker amount.
Correct. $10,000 is the Clark.
$6,300 is Cole Stoker. $10,000...
Is Clark Hill.
Is Clark Hill. So, there's two different proposals here, so I need...
Ooh, gotcha.
To be...
I don't see that. I mean, I see the amount. I don't know what number to plug in.
Well, it depends which firm.
We have to figure out a motion here somehow that's going to work on it, but you're working on it, I know.
Well, to be clear, we, then we have to choose a firm, because that's where I was going to go, is and to hire Clark Hill. So do we want to go with Cole Stoker for $6,300 or Clark Hill for $10,000? And your recommendation?
Okay, there's state law here too, as on clerk, and maybe you're showing that. An elected official has the right to ask for outside legal counsel. They have to go through a prosecutor first. Our prosecutor, John has done that, our prosecutor, the side of the police declined it.
Yes.
Then, the elected official, whether it's Michelle, John, anyone, has option to go to the board and ask for financial assistance to help them the case. I don't believe it helped, Michelle, the board can decide which law from.
I can't tell you that because I know with the other suit that we're involved in, we have sole authority to pick it up. As an elected official, that might be a...
However, the board has to authorize the financing.
Ms. Reddick.
Could you repeat that? We don't have, we cannot authorize one firm or another?
I believe that's a decision of the elected officials. They are, an elected official...
Excuse me, I think I have the floor.
They cannot spend the funds, though, without approval of the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so if we thought that maybe the Clark Hill, is that his name? Or is that a former?
That's a firm.
Clark Hill's the firm we wish to...
That's a law firm.
We wish to hire.
All right. Why, I mean, why is it so much more expensive? Can you justify that?
Sure. We got the quote from Clark Hill first, and this attorney, his, how shall I say, resume is considerable. He worked in the Attorney General's Office for eight years doing, among other things, tax law. He was awarded the Attorney General's Excellence in Appellate Advocacy Award, so he's well-versed in appellate work. He, for a time, actually represented the Michigan Department of Treasury, so he's well-versed in tax law. He spent years working as a research attorney advising judges, and he understands how judges think. And his years of state government experience would definitely benefit the county. He is giving us a discounted rate. $275 is a discount for this gentleman. And we then, as courtesy, went to Cole Stoker and asked them to also bid this project. And so they worked off this $275 and undercut that bid.
Okay. I have great, you know, faith in Cole Stoker, and I don't know anything about Clark Hill, and I'm sure that the attorney is very, you know, comparable also, but my point is, is that the law is the law and that any attorney can argue a case to support their position on the law.
Okay.
And I totally understand why you would want to go forward with the appeal, but I don't understand why we would spend more money than necessary.
Okay. Let me give you an example. Would you hire a pediatrician to do your heart surgery? The attorneys don't all know all laws. It's a practice. So this gentleman is well-versed in Michigan tax law, and that's why we're trying to hire him.
Okay. Mr. Lotner.
So if I understand this correctly, thank you, Michelle, and for the clarification. We can't choose a firm. If we were to just authorize $6,300, that would force you to go with Cole Stoker. If we authorize up to 10, that gives you the ability to pick whatever. Okay. So, we just need motion two. Do we have a motion?
I do that.
I have a motion on the table, and I will amend it to up to $10,000.
I don't know that it was ever seconded.
It was not.
Yeah.
Oh, support.
So I don't think we have had a motion on the table.
I'll support the motion, and I will also support the amendment. Okay.
Okay.
And my question to you today and to this board, did not, did John, our Treasurer, not come before this board a few months ago and have a conversation with us about wanting to use the expertise of this particular agency for that particular purpose? Because I believe it was two or three months ago that he came to us and introduced this company to us, and we gave him our support at that particular time, if I recall correctly. So, that's why I supported the motion and the amendment.
Any other comments? No.
More of a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to be sure I understood. Were you saying, were you saying that the law says we can't choose a firm?
Yeah, I'm going top my head here. I believe you have the authority to allocate the funds, not mandate which attorney reviews. So if you pass a motion, it should be not to exceed $10,000 from whatever fund Teresa's proposed.
The 258.
And that is the motion?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes five to two.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so then that brings us to the board goals.
Yeah, what I tried to do is summarize the action you took last week at the special meeting, and I believe you passed goals, but if you just look at this, you don't do it now, I mean, you just got the, I thought it would be nice to just put them in one document where you can look at them, so I tried to capture what I thought you agreed upon last week. So just take a look at it. If it's not correct, we can modify it. You thought we passed motions last week on all of these goals, but I thought it'd be good to have them summarized in one document. So just take a look at a few. If I miss one, let me know.
Thank you. Any comments? Thank you. We'll go on to review of financials.
I'm going to, I had a few questions, but they're minor. I'm going to let them go.
I just wondered what's going on with the register of deeds, you know?
It's still part of that refund process we talked about last month, and we wait till we get a bunch from her, and we batch them off as a quick entry.
That's what I kind of thought, you know?
I think she's getting really close to being through all of them.
I saw her light still on, like when we came in, so.
She's salaried, right? Just wanted to point that out.
All right. Any committee reports? How about special reports from staff?
Just a quick, quick comment. There was several times where the question was called. Just to clarify, question is the only thing that does not need a second. However, you need two people to call questions. So in theory, one person can call questions. Debate can continue for five more minutes. Someone can call a question, then you have to vote. So it does not have to be second. If one commissioner calls a question, debate can continue until a second commissioner calls a question. Just want to clarify, because I know a couple of times we're looking for a second. You don't need to do that. It basically means that if you call a question, though, you cannot participate in the debate. The minute the second person calls question, then you have to vote.
So instead of saying second, we say, I also call a question? Okay.
Okay. All right, so then, any other staff or anything? Okay, so then that brings us to public comment.
Well, I just, to me, I was just looking at this more of raw information, and then it's nothing to do with the tower works the best or whatever. It's just the way some things get done, and I think that there's an opportunity, a golden opportunity, and Melinda and I are probably the only ones that know this, but to the Leland Township's efforts, this county tower that's now sat on the ground for two to two and a half years because of Leland Township zoning, and it was scheduled to go in Pitt Road, in our gravel pit, county-owned gravel pit. Leland Township thought and said, oh, it's got to go in industrial land. So the industrial land was on Schaumburg Road where the mill was. Beach Erika had the land, so they paid $10,000 or more to put that tower on Pitt Road. The industrial land, if you just visualize, this is a hill going up like this, and up here is a plateau, and this is a gravel pit plateau. This tower sits on a side hill. It's been repaired a couple of times. It could have been done right with our commissioners at the time. Linda and I agreed on this totally. It could have went in the gravel pit, and we got the same thing going now that they're going to talk about. Everybody wants to hang on towers' feet. So, that tower possibly can't put any more on it anyhow, so now we're going to build another tower or somebody is, when this is probably an opportune time to move that tower, get together with your guys, move that tower onto the county property on Pitt Road where it's at. Everybody can make out, build a heavier tower than what they got, have them pay for it, or whatever we have to do. Then when everything we need comes along, that we need something, they can hang there, because I think it's really stupid that we're paying, when we have to, us county taxpayers are paying for that tower that sits on a side hill like that and never had to be there. So, to me, I mean, we know that technology changes in a hurry every day. Towers change, and that's something I think that you guys can bring up or whatever, just some more food for thought.
Thank you, Bruce.
No charge.
Any other public comment? Please, go forward. Steve Mikowski.
Like literal, I agree with Bruce. The Leland Township planning commission and Leland Township board did a lot of harm and damage to its people, and at the time of the tower, the same thing. Somehow, our elected officials and the appointed officials don't seem to understand who they serve. Just want to touch base on the road commission. Over 40 years, we've lived here now 40 years in the village, 50 years. Over the last 50 years, I've observed the county road commission's performance and what they do driving rural roads. I can tell you from my experiences that it is not as rosy as we all think it is. I've seen the ability for them to maintain roads in a timely manner, and on days that roads should be cleared or straight or plowed, it is not being done. roads should be cleared or straight or plowed, it is not being done. Our village used to be plowed by 9:10 in the morning. If we see somebody by 2 o'clock now, it's a miracle. And then, we don't plow the roads after the snow comes. We come in on Sunday and pay overtime or whatever it is for people to plow roads that don't need any plowing in the roads. I don't understand the process. So, I want to share with you that I, I'm not as enamored, like everybody else is, with their performance. And I think it would be wise for the road commissioner of the county to send out a random survey to people in the community to really see how that performance is. We're being taxed for it significantly. Also, I understand that the counties have received significant amounts of additional money, like $100,000, $200,000, $1,000 a month from the state. I had a document that demonstrated it a year ago from another county, but I cannot locate that document. Also, is recycling a mandated law for us to do? Is recycling mandated? Is it essential? Can't answer those questions, but we gotta have it, right? The, he is, I can't recall the electors petitioning for it either. Well, we've been taxing people for it. Well, you, remember, bureaucracy exists, exists, and it'll always grow. And I welcome Commissioner Anzorius' approach to providing communities options to that. Now, I know that the organization that the county has designated internally, you can handle that, is going to, would see some significant changes, and it would upset certain things that are going on. But if we're going, if we're trying to seek, as your point is being made, and I think it was made by many people, if we plan to increase recycling, then perhaps a different method is, is necessary. And for me, if Leland Township needs a recycling center, it should be in the village of Leland. Let the village find a place for it in Leland. To try to put it, as it was tri- tempted to be done on the 5th of February, to put it on the Kootenai Mountain Nature Area and make that more junky is the wrong approach. So, we, we need to look at this recycling thing, who I think tonight was a good experience. And I will say that if you, I'll welcome the questionnaire to be provided. If you choose to remain anonymous, please present it to Mr. Anzorius. He can give it to me in an anonymous form. And I'd like to know what you think about the questions I have. Now, if you don't work for me or anything, don't answer it, okay? Think about it at election time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on.
I did not miss any transfers or amendments, did I? Thank you. I would recommend, or I would move that the board approve claims and accounts $383,612.51. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Move to approve post-audit, $1,992,369,555. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We are adjourned.